I am sorry to hear that.
You're out of practice?
Being able to sign in because he's usually got.
Did you sign me in already?
Bob's homework on his membrane.
Are we ready? Because I'm sorry, I wasn't ready. All right, we're going to call the order, the April 10th meeting of the Planning Commission, and we are having a work session tonight. Is there anybody here who is here to talk about something that is not, capital N, not currently on the agenda? Don't all come up at once. Okay? Well, I hope everyone had a lovely afternoon today. The sun came out, which was kind of a shock because, you know, we're not used to seeing it, or if we do see it, it's only fleeting and goes away, and then we're like back to the rain. Laura, would you like to, oh, let me ask how many people are here for item 3A? Please raise your hand.
That's the membrane structures.
Okay. Just checking.
Didn't know if we need to switch them because you were here to hear about the Legacy Project.
Yes. All right. Laura?
Thank you very much. Laura Turway, the Community Development Director for the City of Oregon City. I am here to talk to you about accessory structures for residential and commercial. We'll get into the details. We had a series of code enforcement complaints regarding membrane structures. So if you remember way, way back, we used to allow fabric structures, and that's sort of how this all started. And then we created some code requirements to not allow fabric structures. When we did that, we also prohibited metal structures. So we got into the materiality of accessory buildings on single-family homes. And we ended up adopting code, which is what our code is today, that prohibits, in most cases, fabric or metal sheds or outbuildings for single-family homes when they're visible from the right-of-way. And we heard a fair number of concern from the public regarding that. And from that conversation, there was a series of city commission meetings and a work session or two, I can't quite recall the exact number. And from that, they directed staff to amend the code. And that is why we're here, because we've done that.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, I just don't like this thing underneath my chair, so.
Set it right here.
Thank you. And you have really long beds and something's under there, and it gets weird, so, sorry about that. Could you back up just a little bit more? I think that something maybe that the public isn't aware of, of how long we spent on it and all the work sessions and public hearings that we had on this particular issue, so this did not just come out of it somewhere?
No.
So there should be one more box over to the, to the left?
Yeah, there could be a few boxes, because any time we write code, it is a long endeavor. When the requirements for accessory buildings and particular membrane structures were written, it went through a couple different code cycles. It sounds like it was an issue on one particular code cycle back in 2009, and we knew we were going to come back for a code cleanup, so they planning commission directed staff to include requirements restricting membrane structures the next code cycle. And then we did. And then after we did that, we said that it would be effective six months after we adopted the code. But one of the things that we did is we said that it would be retroactive. And so that's where we're seeing a lot of concern from the public, is not only is it that you can't have membrane structures, fabric metal, moving forward, but you have to remove the ones you had. So even if people had built it legally at one point, they would have to remove it if it didn't comply with our code. So that was one of the major concerns that we heard from the public. We also heard concerns that, you know, there's a variety of structure types. I realize on this screen right now, I hadn't noticed it before, but there's some metal structures with tarps on the side, but a lot of them.
These just look like your own.
There's a lot of variety, right? There's some really nice metal ones, there are some literally pile of tarps, which is very different.
So these are all code enforcement issues?
Yeah, these all came to us through code enforcement, but.
Yeah, these are not what, this is just a mess.
Right, so there's a wide net. And the concern was that when we created standards that limited these structures, we went too far, right? That some of them ought to be okay. Some of them are very expensive, and having to remove them was a concern. And then also, there was a concern of lack of proactive code enforcement. As you recall, code enforcement for this use was reactive, not proactive. So they're sort of replying to complaints that they got. But, you know, you could have a lot more out there that we didn't receive complaints on. There was concern that it was a little bit uneven-handed. And then we also heard that, you know, people's neighbors didn't say anything, or they were okay with it. Why is the, you know, the city coming in through code enforcement now requiring the structure to leave when it's been there so long? So that's what we heard. As you remember, when we have accessory structures, there's a couple different departments that partake in the review. There's the building department that looks at building permits if they need them, and the structural stability in general. Development Services makes sure they're not over any utility lines or easements generally. And Planning takes a look at height, location, material, placement, that type of thing. So what we're talking about tonight are just proposed amendments to the Oregon City Municipal Code for planning regulations only. We're not talking about changing anything as far as if it needed a building permit or not. So Planning looks at.
So why are we not dealing with that particular issue?
You're not allowed to, actually. Nobody here at the city is allowed to identif, nobody's allowed to change if a building permit is required or not.
No, 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 that's not what I meant, so.
Sorry.
I think what I thought I heard you say was, so I understand that some of these were put in under permits. I understand that.
Not in the ones in code enforcement.
Well, obviously not, but are we aware of some that were put in with permits?
There are some certain cases where you could have had a metal structure with a permit.
Okay, so.
Right? I mean, there's lots of things going on here. These membrane structures, one, only apply if they're visible from the right-of-way, so if nobody could see it, you could definitely have it. So there are certain cases. But the ones where we heard the initial reaction were, one, through code enforcement. We saw a severe uptick in code enforcement, and it started a larger conversation from the community. And the city commission provided that direction, right, which is the city commission's role to listen to the feedback of the community and amend the code from time to time as they see fit. So that is why we're just talking about these specific items. We're not opening up the code for all sorts of other things. We're keeping it narrowly focused to what we were directed to from the city commission. But it's okay to change code, you know, it's a living.
Do we have that in writing, what their specific request was?
No, they did not provide a written request. We had a work session, or a series of work sessions, so the latest one was in, I believe, December, specified exactly what the direction was. But the code is a living thing, and it can be changed, or it's expected to be amended from time to time. And so we're seeing this proposal from the city, from city staff, but it was direction with the city commission to dial back some of these requirements.
That was the request?
Mm-hmm.
And dial back means?
I'll tell you exactly.
Okay, all right.
All right. So we, these are a summary of the things that we regulate for accessory structures right now, in the plan, locations, size, height, lot coverage, material, and so forth. What we are looking at is, I'm going to go through a couple of slides that identify just the specific requirements that we're changing. So one thing is that we are going to allow, or the proposal from staff, is to allow existing structures that were constructed before January 1st, provided they're not in front of the home. Whether they comply with the setbacks or not, they would be grandfathered in.
Could you not use that? I don't like that term. It should be pre-existing.
Okay, the pre-existing structures.
Grandfathering means something else, and people get that very confused.
All right, so pre-existing structures, if they were in place prior to January 1st, and they're not in front of the house, would be allowed to remain.
And if they received a building permit?
There's not if they receive a building permit. If they don't have a building permit and they need a building permit, they will still need to get a building permit.
See, I don't think they, I don't see how they can be non-conforming structures if they were never permitted in the first place.
There is a legal way in which you could become lawfully non-conforming when you were never lawful in the first place. And so this is the direction from the commission is.
I think the only way you could do that, though, is if you were to receive a retroactive building permit to have that legalized. I don't think you can just waive your want and say, these are all now legal non-conforming. You have to go through some kind of process with the building department in order to, in order to have that done.
Yes, so I think we're saying the same thing. We're separating out planning requirements from building permit requirements. If they needed a building permit, there's nothing that planning could do or at the city to override our building permitting system, which we operate through the state. So if you needed a permit, you still need a permit. This would just be allowing those pre-existing ones if it didn't meet height requirements or setback, if they were there before January 1st.
Okay, what about in the, both of the districts?
So for overlay districts, those standards still apply, so you would still have to go through overlay district review. So we're, we'll get to the materiality, but we would be allowing metal or things like that. That still has to get filtered through whatever overlay districts. You can't get reduced setbacks if you're going to be in a stream corridor. So the overlay districts will still always trump whatever our base code requirements are.
Before you move from this picture, what is the big red mark there? Is that, is that a structure right there? Is that just a driveway?
It's where the treasure.
Thing, it's supposed to be an X.
It's a treasure. That's where the treasure's buried.
Yeah.
Is that just a driveway right now? Or is that some structure?
It is a driveway.
It's a Swiss Army driveway.
If it's in front of, it can't be in front of the house.
Okay, so that little arrow on the, on that little house, is that one of those that you're referring to here as a corner setback?
Good segue. So our next requirement is.
Aren't you glad you asked that?
Sometimes I am.
We couldn't have worked this out better. All right. So we have corner, a lot of corner setback, a lot of corner properties within the city. Corner means that you're surrounded by a street on two sides, generally two sides. So you would have a front side and a corner side. And our regulations now allow us to reduce the setback to three feet here, and reduce the setback to three feet here. I'm pointing and you're not seeing.
Yeah, we're looking the wrong way.
Sorry, you can reduce, if you meet certain requirements, if you're not too tall, and you're currently, if you're separated from structures by three feet, which we're removing, but if you're not too tall, you can get closer to your property line than you could normally. Normally, you can have an accessory structure, and it could be as tall as your house. And if you wanted to really push it, you could have a house that's up to 35 feet tall, and you can have an accessory structure up to 35 feet tall. But it's got to meet the setbacks of your zoning designation. However, in certain cases, you can get closer to your property lines, provided the structure is shorter. So if you're smaller, then you can get closer, so you're not casting shadows and, you know, so tall on your neighbors.
Firewall issues.
So building code requirements would still apply. It's generally three feet, so if you meet that three-feet setback, you're okay.
So does that mean that that little one next to the fence there, does that have to be three feet from the fence, or is that?
That's probably their property line, Tom.
No, I was going to say, but for three feet, separate from other structures, is a fence considered a structure?
I think it's three feet from the property.
I'm just trying to understand, so I'm.
So it's technically, a fence is a structure. You would have, generally fences try and mimic property lines, sometimes they don't always do that. We're removing, we're proposing to remove that requirement, so there's no separation requirement. That was a direction of the city commission.
Okay.
So this is actually the only one that was not a direction of the city commission, but it just seemed to make real sense, so I'm throwing it in here, is that we allow a reduction, if you're not too tall, to the setback between you and your neighbor in the backyard and on the side yard, but not on a corner yard, which is funny, because the structure has to be next to or behind your house. So it's not like the structure's going to be sticking out of the way into the sight of traffic. So I am proposing on my own, I'm sticking my neck out here, because it wasn't, this is the only thing that wasn't direction of the city commission, to also reduce the corner setback for properties to three feet. Sometimes it can be confusing for the public, because we say you can reduce your rear yard setback and your interior yard setback, and sometimes that just sounds like you can reduce your setbacks to three feet. And so we've seen some code enforcement cases over the years where people have put their shed next to their house over here. This one, they're meeting their setbacks, probably because they have, you know, if their property line's here-ish, and this is probably the setback that they need, or, you know, close to it, well, there's the house there. So that they would be able to get closer to the side with their shed, because there are a lot of properties that are kind of constrained there.
Okay, so what about the other one?
So this one, yeah, if it doesn't, if, so the aerial photos are kind of hard to tell where the property lines are. We don't survey the properties. We just place aerial photos on our website at www.orcity.org. And we fly over the city every year, and we take pictures, and there's angles, and it's, it's.
It's a little distorted.
Yeah, some places a little bit more than others, but it's a little bit distorted. So ye, all structures would have to have been three feet from property lines. This code requirement is still saying all structures need to be three feet from property lines, except for the ones that were in place prior to January 1st. Then those would be allowed to be remained.
If this one was moved back to, near that back corner, then it would be okay, because it's.
This one? The corner, or not corner?
The one on the right.
That one? Yeah.
I missed one. So if it's existing as of January, it could stay, but it's got to meet building requirements.
I think if I was that neighbor, I would not.
So even a shed for a lawn mower, which normally most people put against their fence, not in the middle of their lawn, in the future, that's illegal.
It always had a three-foot setback. It will continue to have a three-foot setback.
So someone has to put a shed right in the middle of their lawn, and they have to mow around it?
No, that's not what she's saying.
No, she said, again, it would have to have a three-foot setback from the fence, right?
Correct, and it's to the structure plus all projections of the structure. It depends which one you're talking about.
What does that hurt, being up against the fence? Just wondering. Because that is off to the side of your property typically. Is that something that disturbs neighbors or other things? What's?
There's a lot of reasons, but there's some primary reasons would be like stormwater. And so if you're having yours, then your stormwater, if your roof is going to your property lines, it would be going onto your neighbor's property at that point. There's always the light in the air, which are some of the larger arguments for setbacks, so that you have that for your neighbors, but also it's some.
If your shed catches fire, it burns down the fence.
Yeah, a little bit of a buffer there, so.
Some people put their sheds there to hide their marijuana plants on the other side.
Oh dear, one issue at a time.
I'm kidding.
You want to put your shed somewhere to hide your marijuana plants? It's fine with me.
I was just trying to clarify, so I knew going forward.
Yes, okay. And so just to clar, just to summarize again, all of these are directions from the city commission, except for that corner setback that I'm throwing in there. All right, so that's one change, or a series of changes. The next one is the height requirement. And this would allow you to get closer to that property line, but you could be a little bit taller. Right now, if you're no taller than 14 feet, you can get that three-foot reduced setback. The proposal would change that 14 to 17 feet.
And it's measured halfway away from the peak, halfway up the peak?
Yeah, it's measured halfway between the peak and the eave of the roof on the front.
Not to the peak, but halfway?
Yes.
Okay.
And so this would accommodate some of these larger RVs or travel trailers or pull behinds that are a little height on them. Sometimes they have a hard time meeting the 14-foot setback. And honestly, sometimes, too, they cut the math funny, because it's halfway between, so you'll see these funny, long eaves to try and make that structure fit.
Now, I don't mean to be specific, but I'm trying to understand. So here on this one on the right that you have up there, it looks like it's closer to three feet to the structure here or to this. I don't know if they're the same house. Would code enforcement actually come in and start measuring something like that to see if they're three feet from something?
We're proposing to remove the three-foot separation between structures. There's still a setback structure, so how code enforcement works is they stand on the street and they look at your property. And then you get a citation, and you sort of, when you get a citation, it's give us a call, we'll talk about our standards. And then if things are normally remedied at that point, if not, we can go on site and kind of look at the property or.
So the code enforcement's going to carry around a big book with them to know which one's properties were set like this in the beginning, and which ones are new, so they go to their book and check the address? I mean, they're going to do that much detail? You follow me?
Yeah, I do follow you. I like that you, that would be a great big book.
You can have the GIS overlay them with the.
We do.
I can picture in code enforcement out at each house, one by one, checking everything.
Well, that's the thing, is that it is up to, there's a burden on the property owner to prove that they were in place before January 1st of this year.
Take lots of pictures now.
Take lots of pictures now, document as well as you can, to sort of build that case just in case. We don't survey every property, we don't take pictures of every property, we don't have all that level of specificity or detail. We could use Google, and our, we have aerial photos again on our website, but we only have bits and pieces and snapshots in time. We don't have that good history that a lot of property owners would have on their property.
Can we go back, just real quick? The one with the motor home.
Mm-hmm.
You're proposing to remove the three feet from, basically from the house to the structure.
Yep.
But it's right alongside the fence, so, I mean, and I'm just talking specifically as an appearance, I, you know, assume we're going first, walk down the street, and we look. So it wouldn't meet the setback requirement, because it's close, it appears to be closer than three feet to the fence line, which I assume would be the property line.
Yes, so to get this 17-foot, yes, the closest that you could ever get to the property lines would be three feet for new structures. The only exception would be those structures already in place on January 1st of this year.
So if for Christmas, Santa Claus left me a 17-foot membrane structure, and since I didn't have to teach that week before January 1st, me and all my buddies went out and put it up right against the fence, it's good?
Yeah, but it was January 1st that already passed.
Well, that's what I'm saying, for Christmas.
Yeah.
This happens, so.
But we didn't come out with the code standards till after Chris, till after January 1st, so. There is no opportunity to sort of seize the moment and put them all up.
No, I understand, but I just, so, okay.
Yes, you're correct.
Because actually, I'm happy to hear that, because I have a tough shed, and I just stuck it in the corner of my yard 15 years ago.
Did you get permits for that?
Don't need them.
Is it under 200 square feet?
You've always had to meet setbacks?
Yes.
Whether you need permits or not? Another story.
Oh, well.
All right.
Yeah, we'll get him later.
Complicated.
So.
It's not complicated.
Material standards are sort of what started the conversation, right? We didn't, we didn't care what materials people had, and then as of a few years ago, we did. And we prohibited, when visible from the right-of-way, the fabric structures, the metal structures, the metal cargo containers. A lot of this originally came out of concern for tarps and through code enforcement, which is very different than this variety of things here. And so with the proposed code structures, we would still not allow fabric structures. We would allow metal structures, and we would still not allow those cargo containers.
So this one appears an X or a checkmark? There's nothing on it?
There's nothing on it, because it's saying that we used to not allow it, but we would allow that now.
Have you guys done any studies about other neighborhoods, other cities, other jurisdictions, and how they deal with these things?
We did. And I have to say that I am covering for the planner that's working on this.
Okay, no worries.
I can have the night off.
All right.
But yes, we did a variety of other, it's all over the place, honestly. As most city codes, but particularly the level of specificity that we want to get into with accessory structures, you're going to see a wide variance there for how different jurisdictions do it.
Okay.
So question, why is the gazebo allowed, but the carport isn't?
Yeah, there is an out that says if it is for, not used for storage, like you have your patio table underneath it, it's different. It's in our definition of membrane structure, it specifies use a little bit.
So I couldn't buy a gazebo and put my truck underneath it?
No.
Right.
Or my smart car, I guess, given the size of it.
Now, something that popped up in my neighborhood.
You could put your bicycle underneath it.
Is, we're talking about all these structures, but I have not seen anything, and I'm wondering if it's covered under this, is greenhouses, glass greenhouses that people are putting in their backyards near their fences. Is that covered by any of this?
It's 200 square feet or more, yes.
It's, we don't, we don't not allow glass structures, so we allow glass structures. They have to comply with the same spacing requirements and setbacks as everybody else. The only thing that we're changing with material is that we used to not allow metal, and now we're allowing metal. So everything else, you know, various wood sightings, and that's all fine. We don't say no T-111 or anything like that. We just say no fabric and no metal cargo containers and no tarps.
So the same thing comes along with porches, back porches where people have used metal corrugated on their porches. That's also for some people next door. I live in an HOA, so sometimes people don't like to look at those structures. Is that in any way impacted by any of this?
Yeah, so the ones that are, so this code is just for accessory structures, so there is no translation there, but we do allow metal and plastic corrugated over a back porch. It's usually the HOAs that don't.
Any setbacks or anything like that, that they can't have it right next to their fence?
Oh, yeah. Mm-hmm, so there'd be setbacks for porches, just the same.
Really?
Mm-hmm, more than this, because these can get closer to a property than a house can. Because houses have to meet a greater setback than three feet.
I'm moving out to a forest.
Don't worry, the city will catch up to you.
Why is everything you want to do illegal?
You have to be in forests soon.
It's the kind of guy I am.
So the last thing is, we wanted to, or one of the last ones, are to allow, to really look at how these membrane structures work on commercial property. So we have now a section in our code that says you can only sell Christmas trees or fireworks between certain dates. And so we had proposed to remove that, to say, you know, we really shouldn't be regulating what the sales is, we should be really regulating how it looks. So we should, we're proposing to come up with a code that allows membrane structures or temporary structures on commercial property for a small amount of time. So whether it's a Christmas tree stand or a fireworks stand, or you want to have a blowout sale, sale at the grocery store, and you want to do something in the parking lot, we're now having an avenue to legally do that. And so you can do that up to four times a year. It's got a cap on the number of days, which is 90 over the year, which is an overall cap. But the trick in this one is, it depends how structure, how big your structure is, and that'll tell you how long you could do it each time. So you know you can only do this four times a year, and so if you have larger structures, if it's over 2,000 square feet, you can only do it up to a week at a time. So you'll never get close to the 90 days if you want to, you want to have like a giant wedding or something at a commercial property, whatever the thing is. It could be out there less time. If you have a smaller one, it could be out there longer. So we had proposed the break at 2,000 square feet, which is about this, it is the size that you saw the membrane structure at OC Brewing. If you're kind of funny to think of what 2,000 looks like.
I was going to ask that next, but that's.
Yeah, and so.
So is that 2,000 square feet or larger?
2,000 square feet.
Those things cost a ton of money to rent.
Yeah. And so if you have one that's up to that big, you can have 45 days in a row. And then it goes through our Site Plan Design Review Code to say, how are we going to look at it when we look at structures and ingress and egress and material standards and parking lot standards and things like that?
So they could put it up for 45 days on that corner we're talking about, take it down for a week and put it back up for another 45 days?
If it's smaller than that.
Well, theirs is 2,000 square feet, and I know they can leave it up during the summer months.
Yeah, so they get four times to put it up. You got to get a permit for it. You gotta get a permit for it, I don't know what the permit fee is yet, but we'll run, uh, if this, um, is favorable to the commissions, we'll run up a fee for them to submit for us to review it, but you'll get a per, permit for, up to four times a year. And if it's smaller, you can have the structure out longer, if it's bigger, it can be less. But in either case, any combination can never exceed a total of ninety days a year. And then we'll remove that code section that talks about Christmas tree sales and fireworks sales, because some, I mean, we're seeing things with Valentine's Day, and it, we shouldn't be regulating the use, just the structure or the fact.
I believe there's something in the state statutes about when you can sell fireworks, that's why it was written that way. It has to do with the state fire marshal and all of that?
Yeah, so the, all those state standards will still apply.
Yeah, but that's why it was put into the code, because there is a time when you can start fireworks sales, and there's a time when you have to end, and that's more than what Oregon City or any jurisdiction, um, that code is very restrictive in terms of fire code.
Yeah, and they'll get business licenses, or they ought to get business licenses?
Well, I've never seen a fireworks stand in a, in a membrane structure, because I think there's some, probably some fire codes involving that, and I've never seen anyone in Oregon City put Christmas trees under a, um, under a tent.
So the farmer market is now canceled because they can't put up those tents every weekend?
No, that, it's, that doesn't have anything, I'm talking about Christmas trees, Tom.
I'm trying to be exaggerating here, make a point.
Alright, and.
He's speaking of which.
I love these segues. Okay, so now we want to talk about right of way, this is also the other thing that we didn't have a lot of code for, that sometimes people put things in the right of way and they include membrane structures. And we didn't really have a great provision in our code to apply to that. This says, um, you could build whatever you want as long as it, any material, um, as long as you get your permit for your special event, and it says no more than seven consecutive days, but actually our right of way permit says sixty consecutive days, so we may tweak this language, we're still in draft language, right? It may tweak along this process, that's how you'll see these code revisions go, that they get refined tuned as they go along through, before planning commission, during the planning commission, and then at the city commission level as well. So we'll probably increase the seven consecutive days to sixty to match, and then think about if we want to add more criteria for that.
Why would you be having a structure in the public right of way for sixty days?
Oregon City for celebration.
Yeah, you really wouldn't, it's just to match what our current right of way is. So what it is, is when you have an obstruction in the right of way, the permit allows that obstruction for up to sixty days without being a permanent obstruction in the right of way. You have a permanent obstruction in the right of way, you gotta go to the city commission and get their blessing up to sixty days, you could just do it at the permit counter, so it would be, uh, apparently it never happens for sixty days, but.
I was gonna say, give me an example, because the First City Festival is only for a very short period of time, you are blocking the streets, so it's not like anybody's, I mean, what I'm imagining is where you've got this written, you can have these things in the right of way, and people are still using the right of way for vehicle access, and that doesn't even make sense to me.
It would be like if you had a dumpster in the right of way with a construction site, or something like that, where you would see a longer period of time.
See, people should not be putting pods or dumpsters in the public right of way because they create a site obstruction problem, they're huge.
Make another code.
You can see our codes get long.
So, because every time somebody does something, we have to make a new rule, and we need, and that's not what we should be doing.
Control everything.
Yeah, well, but, I mean, on the other hand, though, at least we're providing guidance so that there's a clear expectation for both members of the public and the commission to know what are the rules when we have structures, or when Fred Myers wants to, any, any business wants to put up a sale thing, how does that fit?
I don't have any problem with sale stuff, what, what I'm, excuse me, please.
We're discussing some of this.
Yes, I understand that, so.
He's new.
What my question is, is that are you talking about special events in the public right of way, or are you talking about anything in the public right of way?
I think it would be everything.
Because I think we've got two things that are conflicting, the public right of way is for pedestrian and vehicle access, not for people to dump stuff in it, unless it's a temporary event like the First City Festival where we're blocking off Main Street or somewhere.
Antique show.
Yeah. Well, the antique wasn't downtown last year, it was in, at the Trail Center, but, when they did have it, so that, I mean, that I understand. So is this title?
It would apply to both, but either one, you would need a permit to do that, and so it would go through our development services department to determine its appropriateness.
So theoretically, I could winterize my RV in a sixty day temporary metal membrane structure.
In the street?
In front of my house.
You'd have to get a permit, and they would have to allow you to do that with a permit, which they haven't.
Why would they say no?
Apparently they say no a lot to some of those requests like that, right? Well, so like, for example, we had one where someone wanted to live in an RV in the right of way, and, no.
Oh, I'm just saying, I, you know, I, I, um, I want to winterize it, I don't want it exposed to the rain and the snow, so. When they say no, I would say, what is your justification for denying me this permit, and what would their answer be? If I say, right here in the code, it says I can do it.
Private use of the public right of way, you can't do it.
Yeah.
Yeah, and actually.
But I can, because it says I can, it allows structures in the right of way.
It's a, it's a permit that's, that, well, is it a ministerial or is it, is it land use?
So I love this discussion, because that's what I was kind of nudging at, is that we may.
If it's ministerial, then you might have a point.
No sense whatsoever.
He does have a point, it is ministerial, and there aren't a lot of criteria, and so I was talking about maybe adding some more criteria as to how we do or don't make those decisions, but you're right, both of you are right. Alright, and then the last one is hoofed animals, I'm not changing the regulations about hoofed animals, all I'm doing is changing the location of where the regulations for hoofed animals are at. You like that? So it was in with our accessory code, and so now it's being moved over to our code appropriately titled animals, which is only now, it talks about dogs, and that's it. So we're just moving it out of Title seventeen into the animal section, I am not diving into what the standard says or changing the standard whatsoever.
Although you did add it is permitted.
I, I'm, I apologize.
Yeah.
I believe there is something already in the code that says you cannot have. Part, you can't basically, unless you're in a certain zone, you can't do that.
So what the code says is that you get one hoofed animal, um, but you have to at least a twenty thousand square foot lot, right?
Right.
Cool, so I can get my pig back.
And it does apply equally to small pigs, big pigs, horses, anything with a hoof.
No, I want a big pig, because that's once a year.
We're not, but, we, uh.
Get a new pig.
Over the years, we've had, we, we started to at one point create code to allow maybe more little pigs than big horses, but we, that never went very far through the commissions.
So if I have a pot bellied pig as a pet, I'm done. But if I just have, if I have a boar that I'm gonna slaughter for the end of the year, I can have that.
He's just trying to be specific.
Well, I don't know, you're now gonna have to go look in the animal code and at the planning code and take a look.
I'm gonna call it in.
Well, it says it's permitted.
Have you, have you?
That, it can be permitted, but you have to meet those requirements for size.
I'm glad he's getting very specific.
See, and people say we don't have any fun up here, ladies and gentlemen.
Well, I'm glad he's getting very specific on this, because the, there's ways for the, all these codes to be changed and altered and twisted.
When you own the property since nineteen thirty-five and you used to have pigs on the property, you have to bring pigs back on the property. That's the advantage of having been in the city for multiple generations, so.
Okay, moving on.
Yeah, so you have a non-conforming section, but once you, you learn to stop doing whatever's non-conforming generally in our code, then you lose it.
But it says permitted, you added is permitted in the, in red?
Yeah, but you mean the requirements.
Say that, it says it is permitted.
It can be, okay, thank you, I will take that and I'll look at that code section. But actually, that's exactly what I'm looking for next segue, is if anyone has any red line changes for the code, a copy's been placed before you, or you can send me an email on it.
Can I ask, when you were developing these codes, I mean, I know you're listening to us, you're listening to the public, but are you looking at other cities, I mean, are you just coming up with these off your head to try and cover every single possibility, or are you looking, trying to find ways that other cities are handling the same problem?
Yes, yes, and triple yes, we did also get, um, Commissioner Espy had sent me some stuff from Lake Oswego, but it is definitely trying to see, when you create code, are we reinventing the wheel? And what is everybody else doing, and then you call them up and you ask how it's working for them, because a lot of times you copy their code and it doesn't work well, so that's not a good idea either. But you're right, you're thinking of twenty different situations over our time that we've seen and how it applies. But a general rule is, anytime you write code, there's gonna be one situation that's not gonna apply perfectly to, it's this one size fits all means that it doesn't fit all, and that there is always going to be a really, really rare case in which it would have been better written a different way.
And the reason I ask that is because, yes, we have a city, a city of Oregon City, but we also have a lot of rural area within Oregon City, and some of that does have farmlands, or does have your pigs, or does have that.
Goats.
And not all these things apply to everybody within Oregon City limits if they're in a rural property.
But if there's own, if there's own single family or whatever, then they still, they, they still have, those rules still apply.
If they had a bunch of really large, um, metal structures, or sh, not even sheds, but you know, um, large, uh, buildings, because they were in the county, and now they just change and annex into the city, all of that stuff would be grandfathered in, provided it was legal in the county. So you can keep doing what you're doing, when you change jurisdictions, it's just, you can't get worse, you can't make it worse, you can't add more that don't comply with our codes. And if you stop doing the thing, you can't go back and forth and flip flop. So say you had a, a, a stockpile business, then you annex in the city, and then you stop the stockpile business, whatever it is, I'm just making up a business, you can't go back a couple of years later and add it again.
I was thinking of like out Redland Road where out near I live, there are farm in places where that, uh, take horses in to take care of them during the winters.
In the city?
I thought the city limits further out there on Redland, I'm not sure where it is.
No, no. No, maybe on South End, but no, the city limits doesn't go out there.
Okay, just wanted to clarify that if we take that into consideration.
And I think that's one of the things that we heard the most pushback from, right? Is because when we adopted the membrane structure code, we went retroactive to say, all of the fabric and tarp and metal structures that are there had six months to be removed. And so that was.
We had a long discussion about that as well.
Mm-hmm, and we did provide a lot of notice for that, but, and then since then, we have had a lot of structures voluntarily remove themselves too, so there's two sides to everything, right? Now we're changing our code to allow it.
What are those people gonna say that voluntarily removed it at their expense?
Probably not happy.
Said he's not gonna do anything about that, then. Some didn't, some did, I take it.
That was their choice that they made.
But they didn't know we were gonna be redoing this to appease those who didn't like it.
But they, but they, but they know that they have to get a building permit to do it. They know that they have to call the city and check in.
But now we're reversing it.
And those things, but that doesn't matter.
And so the, some people get by with it, and the other ones don't.
That doesn't matter, it, it matters what they did at the time the code was in place.
Exactly.
It doesn't matter what happens in the future.
But previously, using the words that, that.
Pre-existing.
Pre-existing, excuse me, that she was using, it just seems like those people are probably gonna feel like they were unfairly treated, that they had to quickly remove it because of their fines while some people waited until this has happened.
And it doesn't necessarily mean that, 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 that that part of the code is gonna make it through this process either.
Exactly.
I'm just clarifying.
There's no, it's, it's not unfair, if somebody wanted to come into compliance, then that's good, that's a good thing. As you recall, we had quite a discussion about this, I mean, extensive, and I, as I recall, Charles, um, was.
Kidwell.
Yes, I don't need to say this last night, I said Charles had some very definite opinions about this, and we talked a lot about what sort of image we were interested in projecting in Oregon City. Do we want to have people with cargo containers in their front yards and make it look like, you know, dog patch? Or do we want to have a city that, you know?
And I don't think we were, we weren't necessarily, when I bring this up, talking about cargo containers, but people who had cemented it in, and people who came before the city commission, uh, because I was here at the planning as well as the city, and there's a lot of people who did a lot of work, and then they were told they had to remove them. And now some who didn't are gonna benefit from that, and the other ones kind of suffer, is what I'm getting at.
Um, question, Laura, on page one of the draft you gave us, two C, uh, you have one is underlined, and I didn't know if that was like a change, because it's got the little change tick mark at the top of the page, or.
Two C?
Yeah, we were trying, I can.
Oh, right there.
I can make that not underlined, it was to provide emphasis.
And that's fine, I, I don't have a problem with it, I just didn't know if it was an addition and it got the little change text underline, or, um, but I, I, I liked that it's underlined, I just didn't know if it was a.
It's not colored, though.
Yeah, because, um, we, so basically the code requirement says side and rear setbacks may reduce to not less than three feet for one in its underlying accessory structure and its projections, if the height does not exceed seventeen feet as defined in section seventeen oh four five five zero. And this is for structures from two hundred to six hundred square feet, so this is like our most common one that we'll see and for permits. And people read over the one really quick and say, okay, I'll get, it's basically saying you get one reduced setback for a structure of this size. And people read over that so fast and then think that they get a second one, and we want to be as transparent as possible. We also have guides for development of things like this, and so whatever we could do to bring attention to that one, because it's an important one. But you're right, it does look like it's a code amendment, huh?
No, I took it as an emphasis, that's what I saw when I read it.
There's no color, so.
Well, true, but my concern was, there was the little, there is a change on this page, and then there's the little gray mark off, which I think is, would draft probably disappeared, but I just wanted to make sure, it was better to ask than to assume. Since we're talking about what you've proposed, can we go back to the temporary structures in the right of way thing? Because I think, um, I, I think if you're gonna have, allow them, there needs to be, it needs to be like under special events or something like that.
Yeah.
Because otherwise you're gonna end up with people like me arguing that I can put my RV underneath my little metal shed, um, but, and, you know, for seven days. I can see why you'd want to have an obstruction permit for sixty days if you're, you know, doing extensive remodel or you're building a house, and you're gonna have, you know, you need to put your stack of lumber at the, you know, in the street because you've got bulldozers or cranes moving around, and you can't put it in the yard area. So I could see why for sixty days, maybe you'd have a few things for, you know, but, you know, a structure, I, I can't see of a time where you'd want a structure other than, you know, for some sort of special event. You know, than the neighborhood's having a, you know, block party or whatever, but for sixty days to. I think, I think it's a safety issue as much as anything, to have, you know, a pod or, you know, something like that in the, in the way for sixty days is, just seems to be a bit much, so.
It is a good number.
What?
Is there a number that resonates, oh, okay.
Yeah, I think you're okay, I mean, three is what I'd say, but you know, depending upon the event, you may have a day or two of setup, and a day or two of the event, and a day or two, so I think seven's a reasonable thing to, you know, and, and then if the person needs to put up a structure to cover his drywall for his construction, he can put it up for those few days, get his drywall in, you know, whatever, whatever the case may be.
I don't mean to be, Mr. Doughton Thomas in complaint, I'm, what I'm still wondering about is, during the time that this was under consideration, there was fines levied by code enforcement, correct?
Um, I'm not aware of anyone who ever got fined, the only way you can get fined is if you go to code enfor, if you get in a code enforcement action, and then you go to municipal court, the judge is the only one with the authority to fine people. And so when we ever do any code enforcement, our goal is compliance, not to get money from anything.
The only reason I ask, I was wondering if, if now that we are being more reasonable with this, if anybody who did pay fines, if that's gonna be reimbursed back to them, because of that.
The courts.
Yeah.
I know, I was just wondering.
It's my understanding, nobody has been charged to fine, but people have been forced to remove structures.
Yeah.
So the, the idea that we are now allowing this again, so we used to allow it, then we didn't allow it, now we're allowing it again, and some are grandfathered when others did volunteer to remove them, is.
So those people who did remove them, and now they're gonna put them back, they didn't beat the January first deadline as, as pre-existing?
They have to comply with setbacks, like all new structures.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
And just to reiterate, so you're gonna come back with some use language for the temporary structures in the right of way?
Yeah, we'll come back and look at those criteria a bit, um.
Because in addition to special events, I think things that are trades related, I could see how that could be in that mix.
So it is always intended to be coupled with a special event permit, because they'll need a right of way permit for that, and so there's the events and the right of way permit process that they'll go through, but the criteria there should be, um, clearer than they are.
I'm more concerned of the res, than, about the residential uses than the commercial uses.
Oh, I'm concerned about the commercial uses, because, you know, the pe, the people that own these businesses that have pods.
Oh, yeah, that's true.
They need, you know, they need to be notified that you can't just go dump one somewhere. We had a situation in my neighborhood where somebody dropped it, not somebody, but the company dropped it right next to the neighbor's driveway, they couldn't see a thing backing out of their driveway, every day, I mean, it was just like they were playing, you know, what, what's that game that you're trying to avoid, uh?
Frogger.
Frogger, it was like they were playing Frogger every day, and that was, that's, that's not good.
Especially out of Washington.
Yeah, it was, it was pretty darn dangerous, and so it's.
Do we want to hear from?
Yeah, we do want, we want to do, hear from, I think there's one question that I asked you some months ago, and I think would be, it's rel- some months ago and I think would be, it's relevant for the planning commission, so what I understand is that ninety-nine point nine percent of these structures are in what I would consider new developments. And when I mean new developments, anything that's not Kanema and, and McLaughlin.
Uh, yeah, so I would say that most of them are not in brand new subdivisions, well, except for the metal ones.
Yeah, no, I think they, I mean
You're talking about fabric or metal?
No, I'm talking about any of these where there's issues. My understanding was is that the majority of these are not in the older neighborhoods. And when we had them in the older neighborhoods, there were, there was a completely different issue with like the cargo container that was over on, near Van Buren, it was sitting partly in the street and part of their property. But yeah, my understanding is that they are not in those two neighborhoods, they are primarily in
Nearly rural.
I'm not gonna say that there's zero. Actually, I don't even know where they all are, I had sent, um, a notice, this notice for our code changes to code enforcement and let them mail it out, so I don't have the list of who all is in code enforcement.
That's my understanding.
But, um, they're primarily not in McLaughlin and Kanema that those, I, there has been some in the past.
Right, there has been some in the past, but they're primarily in other areas of the city and I've seen
So code enforcement really sent these out to people who they had witnessed before, they didn't send them out to generally everybody? Just the ones that they had, um, sent notices to?
When we were directed as staff to do the proposed code amendments, the city commission did not direct us to send notification to every property owner in the Oregon, in Oregon City. It's a big endeavor, it's about, I can't remember the cost, more than five, less than ten grand. Uh, but we did send it out to everyone who is in code enforcement.
So when I look at this, yeah.
If we allow the structures to stay up, and we had sent them notices before saying we're not processing code enforcement, we're holding on to it till we reach a solution.
Right.
Or just make a decision either way.
Right.
Okay, so all of you know this is not a public hearing. This is a work session and we are very interested in hearing what you have to say. We would appreciate it if you would like to speak. The only part we're gonna abide by is that just tell us what your name is and you don't have to give us your specific address, but for me, it would be helpful if I knew what general area you lived in. So if you live in Rivercrest, just tell us you live in Rivercrest, that'll give me context of what you're talking about and where you are, because again, we have different neighborhoods, we have a lot of neighborhoods in Oregon City and there may be different circumstances for each of these particular neighborhoods. So if you live up off of Myers Road, you know, that's a newer development, there's newer developments up there, there's, the houses are placed a little differently than some of the other areas, so that would be really helpful.
In three minutes.
Um, well, I would say we need to be a little flexible.
Okay, close to.
If, I think if you let me know, somebody's going on and on and on, then we'll just ask them to wrap it up, you know, if I do this or something like that, but anyway. So Lynn, would you like to, um, come up and, uh, let us know what you'd like to have us listen to?
You have any music?
Do I have music? No, different.
We'll listen to music.
Lynn Anderson, Oregon City, I live in the Tower Vista neighborhood near Chapin Park. As far as, uh, Ms. McGrith, your first question about if the public was aware of how much time was spent on this, maybe not everyone, because as far as public notice goes, it was sort of hit and miss, it was in people's water bill and, I don't know about you guys, but when I get my water bill, I just throw out everything but the bill.
I don't.
And I, I don't read everything I read. Well, you're, you're special, but, um, actually, I went back and, I guess I'm a glutton for punishment, but I watched all of the planning commission meeting that covered the subject in, I think it was like two thousand and ten. I didn't realize that you guys had talked about this at a later planning commission meeting. You must not have made any changes to it.
Some small modifications.
It must be very small, yes.
Hmm, okay. But yeah, I have actually watched hours worth of planning commission meetings from two thousand and ten and one of my neighbors actually watched them all and transcribed them, so.
Where you get brownie points.
I am really aware of what went on. And then in the, all the original meetings that I watched, the original intent of this was the city was trying to clean up unsafe storage and nuisance storage such as hoarding, that sort of thing, that was their original intent. But as you watch the, the meeting, you can see that it just kind of, they got off, off and eventually it, it morphed into this membrane structure thing. The metal cover that I have in my backyard that is next to my house, it's one of, it's one of more than two hundred structures that exist throughout this city. These, these covers are aesthetically pleasing, they're safe and they're being used to protect recreational vehicles, boats, patio recreation, outdoor, outdoor activity. I support the original intent of this code, but the unintended consequences are violating my personal property rights and common sense. And I'm hoping that these proposed changes to this code are going to correct this. Additionally, you guys asked about if any of these have been permitted, I know of one specifically that was issued a permit after the code change. I talked to the property owners and they got it permitted a couple of years ago and it violates setbacks and I don't know why they gotta permit. So it's, it's really, it's confusing. I want you to note that these proposed changes to the code, that they do respect the historical neighborhoods. They're still governed under historical considerations and, and I totally agree with this. And then also the point that you brought up, Mr. Guile, and someone else asked a question at CIC meeting last week when it was presented, was about the people who have already removed their structures because of the code. That was their choice, our choice was to get involved, to invest our time and our efforts, go to all these commission meetings and to take, um, issue and action about this retroactive code that we felt was unfair. Other parties could have done the same and they chose not to. So I hope that you'll support these changes and support our personal property rights and common sense.
Do these suffice what's currently in here?
Am I surprised by what's in it?
No, do these suffice to cover your situation and others?
They do, they do.
The only reason I brought up the others is because they probably, like I, I would have been frightened, oh my god, we're gonna get ticketed and all that and I better do this before I get in trouble and then it's too late.
I absolutely agree and honestly, um, we considered, we considered if, if there wasn't a change, a class action suit amongst everyone as far as what it's gonna cost us to remove them and the loss of our investment, because, you know, we put them up legally. And so, you know, it could go both ways.
Do you have questions for?
Yeah, the, the issue that we brought up, the seven days structure and the right of way, do you have a opinion one way or another about that?
No, it, it made me think about maybe if somebody was having a garage sale or something and they wanted to put up a tent over, over the weekend and, you know, that sort of thing.
Put the tent up in their own yard, not in the street.
Not in the street.
Yeah, and that's, that's the key, is it's, for us, it's in the street.
Yeah, no, this doesn't affect us, like I said, the majority of what you see here, the, the people have these investments, that they're not temporary structures. These things, I mean, mine didn't move at all during that giant windstorm we had on Thursday. These things are in the ground, in the concrete, they're bolted in, um, they're, they're very safe and secure and they're not considered, we don't consider them temporary by any means and
Let me ask you a couple of questions. Number one, when you bought it, and I apologize if this seems a little forward, but did you check with the city to see whether you needed a permit for it?
No, in fact, and I don't think most people would, because it's not something that you think that you're building something, I mean
But you are, you have to put it, you have to put it together.
You put it together yourself, it's not like we went out and hired, you know.
Yeah, you're building it though.
It's a swing.
So let me ask you the other question, you said in your property, you have it in the back corner, so it's not visible from the public right of way?
It is visible from the public, it's on the side of my house and, so it's in my back, it's behind my, my fence line.
Okay, but it's not behind your house?
It's not in the back of the house, no.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just trying to clarify where it is, 'cause you said it's in the back and I'm thinking, okay, so here's your
It's in what I consider my backyard, because it's behind my fence.
So it's in the side yard? It's in a side yard and you're in an interior lot?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you.
That's, that's it?
Thank you.
This is your day, come on up, if you have a que, if you wanna tell us something. Come on up. How are you?
I'm good, how are you?
I'm great.
Good.
I just had a quick question.
No, tell us, you have to tell them your name, even though I know your name, I can't say it.
Mark Litsky, and I live here in Oregon City, uh, down on Eleventh and Monroe.
So you're in the McLaughlin Conservation District, which has different requirements?
Which we moved in and, um, didn't, you know, we, we, we bought the house and didn't know that it was going to be changed to that. So that was a surprise to us. Uh, we got, uh, we just found out that, oh yeah, we're in this, so that was kinda interesting. My question has to do with the, uh, we have two lots that are together. They're, they're, I mean, we own two lots. So my question is, is there, how did a setback or rules or anything like that apply to, to us? Because I have to call myself and ask myself if it's okay if I'm sitting on the border, you know, that kind of thing, so I'm curious if that
Property lines don't change regardless of ownership, so you have two tax, legal tax lots with property lines? It still applies whether you own it or somebody else owns it.
Okay, there's, there's no way we could have any kind of structure in our two lots that wouldn't be
That would cross the property lines?
Well, that wouldn't be visible to the right of way, that was the other question too. Because all of what we have is, is on all the same lot. Um, and it's behind the house, the front line of the house, of the house that's on that lot, but it's in right, even with our house that's
You have two properties?
Yes.
They, they're looked at individually?
Are they?
I'll give you a card.
They, they, they look like they're one property because of the way we did our parking area.
Staff ought to be the one that
I'll give you a card and we can, I'll take a look on a map and
I would wanna make sure.
Can people apply to have a, a property changed to one tax lot?
Mm-hmm, you can do a lot line abandonment process, uh, but
You can't have two houses on one lot.
It requires an official process that gets recorded with the surveyor, so it permanently deletes that line.
You've got two houses on one lot, which doesn't really work, so.
Yeah.
See, we have three houses.
Well, three houses, or how many ever houses, anyway, yeah.
So one house is on one lot and two houses are on the other lot, so.
We'll take a look afterwards, I'll give you my card.
Yeah, that was a good idea.
That's the best thing.
Okay, that was my question.
Okay, so I just wanna be really upfront, I, I have very serious concerns about these types of structures in the historic districts, both of them. And I advocated quite a bit for
Not only that, but our conference of plan talks about it too.
So anyway, anything else?
Nothing else.
Okay, all right, thanks Mark. Anybody else? Come on up, 'cause we're not gonna do discussion yet. Honestly, we really don't bite. Unless it's what?
Unless it's me speaking.
My name is Kim and I'm in the, uh,
Kim.
South End area.
Kim, what is your name? Yoder.
And I'm in the South End neighborhood just off of Central Point. And we have a corner lot, however, the corner lot is more rectangular, so my side yard is my backyard. So our concern structure is in front of the house because of the way the lot layout is. There is no way to put it alongside the house or behind the, the back of the house because of the lot layout, so it would be nice to have specific lot layouts looked at when looking at these corner lots, because not everybody has the opportunity to put it behind their house. And like, um, Lynn said, we're just trying to protect our investment. All of our neighbors love ours, they, when we brought this up to our neighbors, they said they liked the appeal of ours, it matches the color of our house. They have no concern about it, it's metal, it's secured, it's safe, didn't budge during the windstorm. But unfortunately, the, the setback is, is our biggest concern right now. But it is behind our fence line.
What is the, what is the structure? I'm sorry?
It's a metal, our, our boat cover.
It was like one of the ones in the slide?
Yes. Yes, but because of the way our lot layout is, is we cannot get ours specifically past the front of the house, of the threshold.
And I'm assuming you didn't check to see whether you had to have a permit for it?
We did not think that it was necessary at the time, no.
Just, I'm just trying to ascertain what people know and what they don't know.
We kinda went with the, we're on our property, we're behind a gated fence, so we put our toys away, we shut the fence, it's safe, there's no obstruction to the neighborhood, no garbage or trash or tarps or anything.
Okay.
So if the, my request is that the corner lot clarification gets cleared up so those of us that are in a unique position where you can't get that setback correctly, be, be, be looked at.
Okay, um, I guess what I would say is talk to Laura and then if it's a weird thing that doesn't fit under this, then you bring it back to us when we go over this, 'cause you were gonna come back with some other language before, right?
Yeah, the next time you see me will be at the end of May, um, hopefully with actual code language through a legislative application, but
Yeah, so I, I would say meet with Laura and if there's some, something that isn't, if it isn't already taken care of, 'cause
Everybody has a different case specific to them.
That's why I said everybody's situation is different and everybody's, everybody's law is a little different.
As Laura noted, corner lots are kind of special, so.
Right, thank you for your time. Come on up.
Uh-oh, he's got a big pack of stuff.
I appreciate your taking the time this evening, 'cause I know you could be doing something else, or we, we do, we appreciate it.
Well, thank you.
My name is Brian Gibson, I live in the Tower Vista neighborhood. I, uh, spoke at one of the earlier commission meetings. Uh, just wanna reiterate what Lynn said. We put ours up before, uh, we had to go through this whole process, when they were allowed, I guess. And it's just there to cover, it's one of those slides that's up here. It's just there to, to cover an investment that I've got.
It's, it's a metal thingy or?
Yeah, you can roll to it if you want, it's up there.
Oh, it's on the actual slide?
Yeah, it's in there.
It's a seventeen.
No, it's actually fourteen, but keep going.
Oh, that's just to show what we're going to.
This one right here.
So it's similar to that, yeah.
No, it is that one, I think he's saying.
Oh, it is that one?
It is that one.
Oh, okay.
On the right or the left?
It's not the one on the
On the right, yeah.
Okay, well, that's a good investment.
You're on camera.
Yeah, it's fourteen feet from the ground to the peak of that thing.
Okay.
Okay. Appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you for your time, yeah, thanks for coming in tonight.
Uh-oh, you're being joined.
Oh, support, all right.
That's okay, she can
Tony Gibson, I live with him.
Uh-oh.
That's our motor home. He's born and raised here, we went to high school here, we graduated here. My first job was in this building, McLean Clinic. I still work in Oregon City. We're just people trying to live our lives. We paid a great deal of money for that RV and it's probably the last one we'll ever have in our lives. Um, we wanna protect it and we didn't feel the tarps you buy at camper work, camping world where it's gonna suffice.
When they look tacky.
When they shred in the wind.
They're harder than heck to put on.
They're anchored into the concrete, like Lynn said, they don't go anywhere. The shingles are gonna come off the house before that structure's going to move. We, we thought it was tasteful, it's behind the facade of the house, it's behind the fence line. It, we think aesthetically it looks nice, the metal matches our house.
We went around too and asked, talked to the neighbors, we're a pretty tight group up there. When all this kinda came up about a year ago and, and I physically knocked on doors and said, anybody have an issue with this? And no, 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 or I wish I could get one put up and, so, nobody has an issue.
People are afraid to, especially now that they know what we've been going through, you know, trying to work through this process with everyone. The proposals that have been made, I, yeah, they're great, I, we agree with them, we've had this up like since two thousand and nine.
Yes.
It, it would be fortunate for us if that was allowed for pre-existing. I feel it's unfortunate for anybody else that may wanna put one up in the future, but we were here, we had ours and, yeah, we agree with the proposal.
Okay, appreciate it.
And, and, and I guess I would note that these changes aren't gonna prohibit somebody from putting something like this up. In fact, it'll, it'll enable them to, they just may have to adjust it a little further away from the fence and closer to the house, but it's still doable, um, and that's, you know.
We're not saying we're, we're proposing to do away with it. We're just saying, we're, again, as Lynn said, this was a very long and involved process and a discussion and we went round and round and round and round and round. I mean, we live here too. But our charge is a little broader than just our own specific properties, our, our charge is
Well, we appreciate exactly what
Entire city, so we're not, you know, we're not trying, we're not trying to make life harder for you or anyone else.
And in the back, I, I don't know if, you've probably heard the background story, that there was never a complaint filed against our property. There was a complaint filed against one person and he drove around the entire city and turned in thirty-seven residents.
I know, and I, and I, you know, it's like I told my son, just because everybody else is jumping off the cliff doesn't mean you jump off the cliff too, so.
Yeah.
And we understand your task and we appreciate it, I mean, I, a lot of points were brought up tonight and some very specific ones, you know? When you're looking at When you're looking at this issue or any, any, probably any code or city ordinance.
It's a balance.
You, you have to think globally, you have to think every doggone situation. Because if, if, if it's this, but, it's like, but, you know, so.
Oh, there will always, and there'll be more people that this doesn't meet their needs. But you can't think of every scenario, we understand you're doing the very best.
Yeah.
Yeah. Believe me, it would be the same as if somebody I knew came up to me and said, you know, gee, you know me, so just let me do this. Luckily, nobody's done that, but. Anyway, thank you so much, we really appreciate it.
Well, thank you.
Anybody else? Please, come on up.
Yes, uh, my name's Dale Clingman, I live in the Rivercrest area. And I have the same situation as the other lady, I'm on a corner lot. And, uh, I know that I can put my cover in, I don't have one, I want to put a new one in. And the reason I found out about, about all this is because I went down and did trying to find out if I did need a permit. And then I found out that this whole thing is in a, yeah, turmoil or whatever. So, I'm looking forward to being able to put one in there to cover my investment, bought a new trailer. I know it'll fit within the parameters, but the way my house is set up, it might be protruding out to the, because it's on a corner. So, I'm hoping that you guys will look at all the different scenarios and let people put them in if they have the room to do it. As long as it's, I'm going to put up a metal one, just like these people, that's structurally sound. And, uh, I just hope you look into that also.
No, as long as it meets the requirements, you're, you're good to go. Whatever those happen to be.
Okay, yeah, appreciate your time.
No, thank you. Anybody else? Come on up. Thank you. Thank you for filling out the little form too. Makes staff's life a lot easier.
Um, my name is Wayne Morris, I live in the Hazel Grove area, up off of Central Point. And, um, I'd like to answer one of your questions first, and that was that I really just saw other people with the structures in my neighborhood. And I thought, oh, man, I need one of those too. And so, that's, that's where I did that. Now, I do have a ten by twenty in, in the back of my house also that, um, I actually, I did go on the, in the codes and requirements, a permanent structure to make sure that it was code compliant and all that stuff. But when it came to the, the membrane structure, I just thought, well, shoot, everybody else has got one. And so, that's why I went ahead and just put mine in.
In hindsight, don't assume that every, because everyone has it, that it's, it's okay.
So, actually, I was at the last meeting and participated in some emails, exchanges. And, and I actually have learned a lot through this process, you know, uh, about being a good citizen, all that. But, um, I appreciate all the work that you guys have put into it. Like, I've only been involved with this for the last year when I put up my structure. And I know that, you know, it's a balance between, um, our communities, our neighbors, our rights as property owners. And, and I really respect that. I, I, I feel like I'm a part of my, my little neighborhood there, you know. Uh, I, I kind of spearheaded, I don't know if you know the football run park up there, but, um, the whole cleanup of that, I kind of spearheaded that. And all the neighbors came together and we got this great park up there now.
Thank you.
And, and so, I really feel like I'm a part of this community and I work hard to, you know, make good relationships with my neighbors and all that. And I know that I need to be respectful about my neighbors too, you know, just like putting a big monster up there and, and not considering that, hey, that's kind of a pain. Isn't really what I would want, I'd want to have that kind of relationship with my neighbors, so. So, I, I guess that's really what I wanted to say, is I really do understand that this has been a long process for the, the commission. And that there's a lot of work in there. And, um, I certainly support, you know, the balance that you guys have come to. And it really, I believe, suits the majority of us that are concerned with this issue. Thank you very much.
Thanks for mentioning the need to balance that. Because it's, I think that's one of the prime considerations that we have.
Yeah, it really does strike that out, we need that too.
Thank you.
No, thank you so much. Anybody else? We didn't hit this side of the room. You want to come on up? Nope. What about you, sir?
Christina, do you have anything to say?
She doesn't have one. Okay, well, since like I said, this is not a, um, public hearing, we will, since nobody else wants to come up, we will continue to have a discussion. We're not going to be making any sort of decision tonight, I assure you. There's too many questions. Yes, sir. Say what?
Paul had something that he was starting to say and you cut him off because you said this is not a discussion.
No, no, I, I'm fine.
No, I did say we're, we're going to have a discussion, but we're not going to make a decision. People, I want to make sure people understand, this is not a public hearing, we are not deliberating to make a decision. We are going to have, we're done with the public input and we are going to have some discussion tonight. But I assume we are going to continue this over for further.
Well, it isn't anything to continue, it's just a workshop.
Yeah, well, we're going to continue the work, the work session to more, but we can have some discussion now.
I think we're headed to an evidentiary hearing after this, aren't we?
I hope not, because I'm not ready to be making any decisions.
Well, in the end of May, she said.
Yeah, well, that's, that's the schedule that Laura was putting ahead.
I know, but we can change the schedule.
Okay, all right.
So, do you guys have anything you want to further discuss about this or ask staff more questions?
Well, all I am looking for in, like, and that's what I'll be looking for in the report, is, is the consideration for goal two. And I sent you the email, just a couple of goals, uh, in the comp plan. They talk about, you know, good neighborhood design, livability, all that other kind of stuff. And, you know, establishing facilities and land uses and neighborhoods that help give vibrancy, a sense of place, et cetera. So, those are the kinds of things that I'll be looking for, kind of overall. I, I don't want to get into any of the other stuff, but.
Well, you beat me to it because my, my question tonight was going to be, I wrote down, you know, what about what the conference of plan says?
Right, so, in the housing element, we talk about a combination of incentives and development standards to promote, encourage well-designed, single-family subdivisions, multifamily developments that result in, uh, neighborhood livability and stability. So, those talk about establishing development standards, but in, I think when you have those development standards, you have to follow them and, and we do. And so, I think those are, those are the things that, and I'm not saying one way or the other, which way I want to go. But I think those things really do have to be looked at when we look at the balance between, um, you know, people having the right to build things on their property. Because I like to build stuff too. I like to have things happen on, on my property, I'm, I'm, I like that. But, um, I think that those things have to be, and I'm deliberating and you can shift it at any time.
You're not deliberating, you're just making, you're making an opinion.
But I think that needs to be balanced against, um, uh, those, those rights and the rights of others that might be affected by those structures. And it sounds like maybe they're not, so maybe it's an on-issue. That's all.
Well, I'm going to go to my right, Vern. Do you have any item, anything you want to discuss?
Yeah.
What are you hearing, what are you thinking?
Well, I think I heard that the citizen.
Oh, yeah.
It should be on.
Yeah, it's on, but you make sure you.
Yeah, we'd get in big trouble for that.
Yeah, we don't, I do not want to see the face coming over there saying, speak up.
Our newbie.
I think the input from the citizens is, uh, pretty consistent. And, and they're looking for clarity across the whole spectrum of what we can do with these accessory buildings, whether they're RVs or garden shops or whatever. So, I think the mission may be, and we're headed in the right direction, and I realize I'm only here for a very short time, so I don't have the background. But I believe we're headed in the right direction to come up with a balance or a clarity to what we need. And will it ever be perfectly one hundred percent designed? I, I doubt that because there will be changes or there will be exception categories that, uh, don't quite fit the mold. How that gets handled will be in the work that's left to be done before our next, uh, next meeting.
Other than that?
I think that's it.
Tom?
Like he said, you're, you're new and you've said everything perfectly, I would have said. But listening to Lynn and everybody else, I, I agree, they, my situation, I consider about are those exceptions like the side yards and how those are going to be handled. And if that's going to be addressed in here some way about when there are properties that are thin and narrow, but it's a side yard. Other than that, I think it seems like most people are satisfied with what we've got, except for the exceptions.
Zach?
I just want to acknowledge it's a living document, but if we didn't have to change it again in a couple of years, that would be nice.
Thank you. I thought we weren't going to have to change it before.
We were too restricted.
Well, Tom, we approved it. So, we must have not thought it was too restrictive, but anyway.
We didn't understand and comprehend the full picture of what people were experiencing.
Damon?
Well, first off, I think for a city of forty thousand, if we only pissed off four hundred, we did pretty good. And if we can cut it down to forty, then we're doing, they're doing even better. Reason, you know, that's what happens when you do big changes is you end up with having to fine tune it. I guess, I would just say as a general statement, my big concern about these structures and metal ones, uh, in general are, they look good now. What are they going to look like in fifteen years if they've had time to rust? But the other side of that is, is that people who take care of their property are going to take care of this property too. And if they're not going to take care of their property, you're, we're going to have this, we're going to have, the house is going to look bad, not because they have a rusty structure, but because they have moss and peeling paint and dirty sidewalks and tires in the front yard. So, yeah, I, I'm, I'm not as concerned about that, but it's just, you know, that's the thing that, you know, we have to think of, the what ifs. So, I'm looking forward to seeing what, what some of these are, um, you know, what the final language looks like. The corner lots are, I'm glad you picked up on that and I'm glad people are talking about them because, um, in corner lots have a lot more view and it seems inappropriate to restrict them when, you know, in some cases, that also means they have more property because you can't, couldn't subdivide it into another lot.
I need, I need to be assured that we're on an upward spiral in terms of neighborhood design.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
I, 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 and I agree.
That's my bottom line.
But I don't think we should penalize somebody because of the particular lot they're at.
Indeed, I want to be reasonable, but same time.
Yeah, and, and I don't want to see thirty-seven of them propping up and, you know, oh, it's in my backyard, so it doesn't matter. But when you look from the other, well, no, I'm, I'm saying this is the person saying, it's in my backyard, so it's okay. But when you're in the, the next street over, looking through that neighbor's yard, you can see the thirty-seven structures. They're visible from the right of way, so therefore technically you can't have thirty-seven of them, so. And that gets back to your design, so.
This place matters.
The permitting, uh, the permitting process is going to be fun over the next year until things settle down. But anyway, I, I, like I said, there, there, there's some pretty good looking structures. And, you know, if I spent a half million dollars on a motorhome, I'd want to, that motorhome probably costs more than the original house the person lived at in Oregon City, so.
Well, having done this work for a really, really long time, I understand that people don't logically think I should check. So, if, if you're on next door neighbor and you see somebody sending in a comment, I'm the one that's usually commenting, check and see if you need a permit. That is my mantra, I should have it stenciled on T-shirts. Because if you don't check, there are generally some unintended consequences. So, forgive me for getting on a soapbox about that. But we live in a day and age now where, uh, regardless of what people think, you cannot do just whatever you want with your property. It just doesn't happen anymore. You need to be, people need to be considerate about their neighbors. And I appreciate anybody who went around and talked to all their neighbors and said, I'm not having a problem with this. You know, what happens when you get the new neighbor who comes in and says, I think that that thing is really ugly. So, beauty is in the eye of the beholder. So, I'm not going to talk about appearance or, you know, anything to that effect because that's, that's not what I am concerned about. What, what I am concerned about is, number one, is that, as Paul said, we look at the conference of plan policies. I do believe that there is a little bit of an issue with corner lots and I think that we can try to work on that. However, you know, when somebody tells me that these things are in the ground and they're not moving, that's a structure to me. That is, that is something that's not going anywhere. And, you know, my opinion is, is that a structure is going to need a permit, period. So, that's just, that's just where I come from. And again, those of you that know me personally, I have a planning background, I, I think that way. As I said on the, the first round, two thousand and ten, my biggest concern was that we not have these structures in the historic districts. I don't see that they have a place. Those of us that have invested thousands of dollars in the historic districts need to have some assurity that, you know, those districts are intact. And accessory structures can be built in those districts, but they need to meet the design guidelines. And so, the city spent a lot of time and energy on putting together design guidelines for those two districts and those, and those things, anything in those districts, not, I'm not even just talking about this, I'm thinking in general, anything that happens in those districts need to adhere and meet those design guidelines. I think overall, um, I have a concern about us being clear about the right of way. Again, I do not want to see in our community a proliferation of whatever somebody decides they want to dump in the right of way because I don't think that, I don't, I don't think, number one, that's safe. And number two, I don't think it, it's, it benefits our community. There are obviously exceptions, but I think we can deal with the exceptions. But to give a carte blanche saying, okay, you can build anything you want of any material and stick it in the, in the street, uh, no. I, I don't, I, no. That's not, that's not appropriate. I think we also may have some side yard issues, uh, that we need to probably take a look at. And I think it would behoove us to, you know, I looked at this and I made a few notes, but now I have even more questions about what's in here. So, I, I'm going to, I want to look at it again and, um, I hope we have another opportunity to have a discussion about it before we have to go into public hearing mode.
Can I ask, can I ask a question?
And I think the other thing is that we do need to have a balance. I think that we have some people here who got motivated to do something. And there, we have a little bit of a squeaky wheel, but I'm not saying in a negative manner, because sometimes a squeaky wheel comes up with good things. And I think some people here who have suggested some really good points that we need to take into consideration. So, I think that's what, all I want to say about it at this point.
You mentioned structures, I just wanted to make sure that the definition of structure is in the code fits what we're working on here.
I think if you put it in concrete or a foundation, it becomes a structure.
Then we should, we should make appropriate, um, changes to that.
Thank you, that is a good suggestion. It was supposed to be in the draft and it's not, um, to change.
This is not, this is not perfect. This is a, this is an excellent start, Laura, thank you. It's an excellent start.
We changed from accessory buildings in that code to accessory structures to meet the definition of structure and then, um, like a menu of definitions.
Yeah, and, and every jurisdiction I have ever worked in, we have always had a spirited discussion of the definition of a structure.
So, not, in, in, I'm not proposing to change the definition of structure, just how we get there, what we call it.
Yeah.
But it's basically a pile of pencils, you know, anything with any integrity that's on the ground and takes up space.
Will we be able to, will that be part of the information that we're going to get?
Yeah.
So that we can talk about that and then maybe to def, you know, make sure everybody has this, we're on the same page in terms of what the right of way is. Because I know there's a lot of people who don't think that the sidewalk's part of the right of way, but it is part of the public right of way. Our streets are, you know, X feet wide and it goes from property line to property line, includes the sidewalk, the curb, the gutter, the street surface, and then over to the other side.
We will do our best. I wish it was that easy.
I know, it, it's, it's all right, anyway. And again, if you're watching at home, just check to make sure you don't need to do, get a permit for something. Just, just, it takes five seconds to call. And the staff is so helpful and so accommodating and they will answer all of your questions. I myself have been there many times and they are so helpful. I say that from personal experience, so just call somebody. Do not believe what they tell you at the home, whatever it is store, that, oh, you don't need to do anything. Just check, just always check, it's always just a good idea. All right. All right. Christina? Thank you, everybody, for giving up Dancing with the Stars, or whatever it was that you wanted to watch. And if you want to call Tom later and tell him what happened on Dancing with the Stars, please feel free. I'll be happy to give you his phone number. So that he doesn't miss anything.
We'll just put it up on the screen.
Yeah, we'll put it up on the screen, yeah. But thank you for taking your time. I cannot tell you how many times we're here, and nobody's here, and it makes us feel like nobody cares about what we're doing.
Nobody's here, and then they come in and scream, "Why did you do that?"
No, thank you. We really appreciate it. Okay, let's take a five-minute break.
Nope, she's, you ready?
We're ready.
All right, we're back. Thank you, Christina.
That was really good.
Okay, well, thank you, everybody. Tonight, I'm here to provide a brief update of Willamette Falls Legacy Project and the Riverwalk Design Process, and to kind of help orientate you to the next steps as the baton will then get passed on to the Planning Commission. So, I don't have a lot of pretty pictures, and I only have about six slides, but I'm really kind of the boring process person today.
Are there any membrane structures?
No, I guarantee there are no pictures of membrane structures, I think. Okay. So, just to remind everybody where we are, in two thousand and fourteen, the Planning Commission and the City Commission adopted the Framework Master Plan, CP fourteen oh two, which you can see below you, that re-zoned the site from industrial to the new Willamette Falls Downtown District, identified the bringing back of the street grid, identified development parcels, and that orange line on the map was amended on our Parks Plan and our Transportation System Plan as the Riverwalk. So, right now legally, the Riverwalk exists as an orange line on the map. So, our goal as we move forward with our four core values you see above is, in the last year, was to hire a design firm to take that orange line on a map of a linear open space and provide a conceptual design for the full build-out and identify a Phase One construction proposal. We started, actually, the, the, I have a little, Laura asked me to put some metrics in of our public outreach, so bear with me, but I thought it'd be worth revisiting all of our public outreach to date. The first event actually started in September two thousand and fifteen. We had a kickoff event at the Portland Art Museum, which was an interview by Randy Gregg, who's a Portland architecture critic, and he interviewed the design team. We had over four hundred people show up to the Portland Art Museum. It was very crowded, and I think we got some not-nice emails back from them about our capacity that night, but people came out in droves. And not only from Oregon City, a lot of friendly faces that I knew, but a lot of new faces I hadn't seen. And a lot, a lot of events, we always ask people to raise their hand if this is the first time they've been to an event or been involved. And almost every time, we have this, new people raise their hand, so that's really great to see. Let's see, we also at that had people fill out card stock questions, and we compiled all those answers and sent it to the design team. The next community event was March two thousand and sixteen, which was kind of the design approach, which was held at the Abernathy Center about a year ago, and we had over eight hundred people attend a four-hour open house. Hopefully, you were able to attend that meeting. It was extraordinary, and that is actually two of these photos here and here. And the design team did a really neat, kind of, I think people are used to a traditional visual preference survey, where they show lots of pictures and you point to the one you like, but they actually took it a little bit farther and looked at kind of experiences, visions, emotions, and how that translates into pictures. Because a lot of times, people know what they like, but they can't use words, and they just want to describe it. So, I think approaching what people wanted to get out of the Riverwalk through many different exercises was really, I think, the first way. And then, kind of, what are the, what were the key uses, and that's what came out of that event. There was also a subsequent online survey afterwards, and I don't have the numbers for that, but over a couple hundred people took that. We were at the First City Festival, which you see up here in these two slides. I think we talked to over five hundred, maybe five hundred to eight hundred people that day. And that place, we asked people to fill out cards about how they wanted to use the event and at what times, at different seasons, how they saw their experience with the Riverwalk changing. And we just had a lot of great one-on-one conversations, both the design team and staff, with the people. What I like about going to the First City Festival is you hit a lot of people who are interested in the event, but would never necessarily go all the way to a public event, but somehow you stop and talk to them for thirty minutes, and they're really interested, and then they get involved in the project. So, attending events like the First City Festival, I think, are just fantastic for this project and other projects. The next, we had a, at November of this last year, Design Alternatives Open House at Clarkamas Community College. Over four hundred people were in attendance, and over, I think, a hundred and something people took part in the design trip process. And those were really hour, almost hour-long, forty-five-minute-long workshops, which also was great to see people committed to take the time and work through all of those cards. There was also a follow-up survey for people who could not attend the event, they could have the same experience and provide comment. There was recently a March check-in survey, where we had over six, actually now seven hundred people responding. And these were additional questions that came out of technical investigations and the Design Alternatives process, where the design team wanted to check back with the public. And in addition to all of this, there is also stakeholder outreach meetings we've been having with different, such as the Habitat Community, or Operations and Maintenance, or Downtown, or Historic Interpretation, that have been happening a couple of times over this last year. We are interacting with five tribes that have both historic and active ties to the Falls. You can see the names up there, the Confederate Tribes of the Grand Ron, Confederate Tribes of Soletts Indians of Oregon, Confederate Tribes of the Umtiti Indian Reservation, Confederate Tribes of the Warm Springs, and Confederate Tribes and Bands of the Yakima Nation. There are really two ways right now through this design process. There is a tribal advisory board that has been kind of informally convened through this design process, and members of the tribes have been invited to attend those. We are also additionally continuing our government-to-government outreach with tribal councils and tribal advisory groups inside the tribal government's structure, and that will continue. And I just want to remind everybody that this is really a long-term relationship that we're trying to build, and a lot of this, of interaction is really creating space and place to continue those long-term conversations. Tribal outreach always is on its own timeline, and it does not ever match our kind of government, very linear-based timeline. So, I think the best way to, that we try to approach this is how do we keep the door and space open to continue those conversations? And so, we don't say, "Up, time is up, we have to build this, we didn't hear from you, or we didn't get everything we needed," because that's really not the way you build long-term relationships. And so, people ask, "How's, how's tribal engagement going?" It really is, this is a, I don't even want to use a specific number of years, but I'll say, I mean, this is ten, fifteen, twenty, thirty-year relationship we're trying to build.
It's a little persnickety at times.
Yeah.
Well, hey, two things. One, does this poor guy know he's known as Eel Man? I've had several, like, kids at school, or.
I know. I think we need a different, we need a different picture.
Well, I'm okay with it. The kids like it. It's just, he's become known as Eel Man.
He's a gentleman from the Yakima Nation, and I can't remember his name right now.
But I guess, what I would almost frame is, it's, you know, it's a reconnection, because we've had a hundred and fifty-year-long relationship with the Indian Nations. Not so good, but it started, you know, back in the, you know, the eighteen thirties, and, and it'd be nice if we could get back to, you know, where we're supporting each other's needs as opposed to just tromping on whatever we decide we want to do.
Like when Dr. McLaughlin got along with everybody?
Yeah.
Well, those are great comments, and I think how the site is interpretive is a long-term conversation. How we can respect tribal practices that, for, and access to their rights to the Falls. And, you know, I think to remind everybody that there have been people here at the Falls for over twelve thousand years, and we have a blip in that story. I mean, kind of the Western territorial and colonization of it. So, being able to understand kind of how tribes see, you know, rediscover the Falls is actually a very colonial way of talking about things, because they never lost the Falls. They know the Falls have always been here. So, just really having honest communications and relationship is an important part of this process.
Although it is kind of rediscovered, because we covered so much of it, you know, and then, you know, as the buildings are coming down, we're going to find things that, like, oh, you know, like more woolen mill foundations.
I think the other key thing is to remember, this project is not Willamette Falls. This project looks at Willamette Falls, and so, we're doing our best to honor that. But they have their own rights that we are, we are not here to ever be involved with. I mean, that's something that they have, that we want to make sure this project respects usual custom practices and any rights that they claim to Willamette Falls.
One thing I noticed, I hadn't even thought about before, what's the difference, I see tribes on everything except for the last one, tribes and bands?
It's how they're organized.
So that, like, renegade bands here and there, or something?
No, no, not renegades.
No, I'm just saying, I didn't mean it that way, but I meant, just, these are offshoots of the Yakima tribe?
Yeah, I don't want to be the expert on it, but usually a band is a subsection, and, and they felt it was important enough in their, in their official name.
Just the Yakima Nation, okay.
Well, you know that there were many different tribal members, and then they all got kind of put together in certain places, and then they became this name, and you'll find within the Confederated Tribes, there are different Native American folks of different. So, that's why they.
That's why I thought it was interesting. This one has bands, but the other one doesn't, because the other ones are bands and groups of, of Native Indians.
Because we had a lot of people coming to and through here that, for instance, you know, you'll find on some of the documents that they were able to find about trading, that people from the Midwest, tribes from the Midwest, would come out here to trade, and sometimes we'd send somebody back that way, but, you know, there was a lot of intermarriage. There was, I mean, they're just, so you can't say it was just this one group.
So, I'm going to give you the official answer. Those are their official titles. We want to make sure that we honor them by calling them in their, in the way, officially how they wish to be called.
Never noticed before. Thank you.
It's very, don't call them by the wrong thing, though, actually.
So, this, so this is the design process, how kind of graphic we've been using. You know, we had our Fall Event, and actually, today is actually kind of, actually, today is what's correct. So, during this time, we've been doing online surveys, community conversations, the design team is doing site investigations. As we move forward on to the June third event, we'll talk a little bit about the preferred design. The preferred big-picture conceptual design will be released. There'll be a celebration. Late two thousand and seventeen, October, we're looking at a land use seminar with a two thousand and seventeen and eighteen process of construction drawings and permitting, both local, state, and federal. And then Phase One Construction begins in two thousand and eighteen, and construction also involves site prep. So, this is the planer-y's version, so it's not as really beautiful, but I wanted to walk this through with you.
Brooke, quick.
Sure.
You mentioned June third. Is, isn't there something at Omsi?
Yes, I'll talk about that. Yeah, absolutely.
It's not.
So, this is the pretty design process, and this is my not-so-pretty, but more detailed planner process. So, step one to creating a Riverwalk, hire world-class design team. Did that. Step two, have lots and lots of inputs, and this is not an exhaustive list, but these are a lot of things. All during this last year, we've been looking at understanding our local, state, and federal permit requirements and its timelines. Of course, always basing everything on the four core values, getting leadership direction from our partners group, which is made up of two elected officials and administrator of each of the four governments, Oregon City, Clarkamas County, Metro, and the State of Oregon. We've had community events and surveys, once again, our tribal advisory board, government-to-government outreach with tribes. We've been reaching out to different groups that do programming, such as DOKA and other groups, to better understand how this site could be programmed in the future and lessons learned.
Tell them what DOKA is.
Oh, Downtown Oregon City Association, it's at Main Street.
That's right, Tom.
Maintenance and operations considerations, as you can imagine, being in the Northwest. We want to make sure that we design with materials that are long-lasting and don't have any persnickety or unusual maintenance considerations. We've had stakeholder outreach meetings with Habitat folks, Historic Interpretation, the Friends Group, Rediscover the Falls, Downtown Oregon City, and others. There are funding requirements and timing to some of the money. The twelve point five million dollars that came from lottery-backed bonds have specific requirements of timing, what can be used, and kind of the color of money, as well as the Metro bond money has some specific requirements of what can and cannot be used for it. As always, we're working with Falls Legacy LLC, the site owner, and as part of the easement agreement, they're involved in the design process and has, and actually put up money towards the design process. The Framework Plan, CP fourteen oh two, has conditions of approval that need to be met, such as parking plan and infrastructure plan. There are development codes and overlay zones, flood overlay, natural resource, geologic hazards, water greenway, et cetera. And as I always like to say, site topography and constraints, there's extraordinary opportunity, but confounding complexity within the site.
Mind if I?
Yeah, absolutely.
You've just gone through here all the partnerships, then the tribal advisory board, government-to-government, et cetera. I get asked that question by a lot of tourists that are on downtown on Main Street. Who is actually responsible for this whole area? I mean, I, I keep saying, well, someone bought the site, but they're saying, well, isn't there, with all this government that's being involved and tribes, who is ultimately going to govern this area? Is it the city? Is it the state? Is it the national?
Yeah, so that's a great, that's a great question, and if I had more room, I'd probably add more bullets. And under the maintenance and operations, there's, the partners are still finalizing who is actually going to be owning the Riverwalk, and how is the, who's going to be maintaining it? And like a lot of things, it's a bit of a chicken and egg. You know, we'd love to have all the site ownership figured out before we design it, but no one's going to take on ownership of something that's not designed, so it's really been this iterative negotiation process. And so, that will come out through that process as well, is the unique, you have four partners in the Willamette Falls Legacy Project, are the four governments, and they will provide direction and how, who will be owning the Riverwalk. There may be many owners.
So, the Riverwalk is separate of the actual site. The site is owned.
By Falls Legacy.
And they'll be governing that, or be responsible, and the Riverwalk is with.
Yeah, will be a new open space, a new publicly-owned open space, and with the details of the ownership and operation maintenance are still in.
In the, in the Indian tribes may have a, say, well, obviously have a long-term, say, our partnership in that. Or is it the government, the state, and federal?
Right, right now, I'm giving you that, right now, there are four government entities that are looking at operations and maintenance and ownership, and are kind of massaging out the details. We will always have the commitment to reach out and engage tribes that are interested in this process. How's that for a answer, non-answer?
I'm trying to answer all these tourist questions when they walk around.
What's PGE's part?
Oh, and if I could have put another, put another, that would be PGE as well.
Okay, so it's four governments and PGE.
There's two easements on the site. The easement with the property owner is actually a permanent public easement on the property. It's a legal agreement, whereas the PGE easement is an option for an easement, because it needs to be adopted by the FERC, Federal Energy Regulatory Commission. And so, that, FERC actually approves easements after they're constructed. It's one of those weird after-the-fact things. So, we are working closely with PG on their dam operation needs and learning a lot about the dam.
I appreciate this conversation, because there's this list of bullet points of things to think about, and we're coming up with more things to think about for us to come up with a design, and the design that's got to be signed off by not one, but four government entities. And balance, see, we were kind of talking about balance. We have to ultimately meet all these requirements and come up to something that's palatable, that we can spend the money and time, so we have these rigid timelines. And it's been quite an experience getting more familiar with this project because of all of these constraints. It seems like anytime we have a conversation about one little thing, it spirals off into fourteen more conversations about other things that are tangentially related, that we also need to solve or balance at the same time. So, I'm just appreciating the complexity of this project, yeah.
So, there, I could probably have another page of bullets, but I also wanted to save you a PowerPoint. So, I like to say, step three, do more technical investigations and design revisions, and then, step four, go back to step two, which is, go reach out to these people again. So, you can keep going back and forth, and that's what we've pretty much been doing within the year. So, at some point, we need to actually come up with a preferred design, and this is a conceptual design. And I, I like to use lots of analogies. My new word for this is aspirational and constructible. So, a preferred design is, just so you know, the preferred design will not be adopted by a land use action by the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission will be adopting the Phase One Detail Plan. I think because we see the preferred design as aspirational and constructible, we want to, and it has, will have a very long life as we move forward, raising money for future phases, we want to make sure that it is not bound. We want to make sure that it is not bound by a decision we make in 2017. But every time it comes back, we want to make sure it's consistent.
So can we talk about that just for a second longer? So we have, Oregon City is one of the four government entities who make up the partners group and so the partners are coming up with a long-term vision. And then as the permitting authority, which is a different role, we would be reviewing just construction of phase one, is that right?
Yeah, there may be some amendments to the master plan 1402 that may be needed. So while a majority of what the planning commission will look at will be the detailed development plan for phase one, there may be some amendments to the master plan. The next will.
So is it fair to say then, so the planning commission is just looking at our master plan code, the approved master plan and the detailed development plan and how it complies with that master plan. So you're not looking at, do you want a purple bench or a red bench? You're looking at, does it comply with whatever it is in the master plan?
Yes, so. As I think we are all aware, and I'm saying we, once an idea comes out and it's on paper, people are going to think that that is it and I know you already know this and I'm trying to, we need to figure out a way to say that this is a concept, maybe that's what we call it, because soon, like I said, I've already heard this. Oh, I saw X and that's what they're going to build and I'm going, no.
Yeah, I hear that a lot.
Yeah, what you're saying, I know our communication staff is definitely having that conversation. But we also want to raise money too, so we also want to make people think that, you know, that's something that can happen. So the aspirational and constructible is really important and exactly that, that it is a conceptual plan.
Would you say that it is a somewhat fluid conceptual plan because you're saying that later on, there may be some amendments? So there must be some fluidity to it.
There's some fluidity, there's a purpose why through land use action, I wouldn't recommend adopting the conceptual plan because of that. The partners will adopt it, your elected officials will support it in the long run, like any of our kind of master plan documents that may not be at a land use level, but they provide guiding direction. Our governments will do that, it's really important.
Adopt will be by resolution?
Could be.
Okay, because if you're saying that it's going to be ordinance, to me, that's something completely different.
Very much, that's, that's an option of doing it, is adopting it. A way to think about it, and some of these we're still kind of ironing out, but one way we approached it in the vision and master plan is the framework plan was what was adopted by the planning commission. And those were kind of the very technical planer's. And then there was that beautiful kind of 70-page vision and master plan, which had a lot more detail and pictures that, that really were for education and aspiration, but they were not going to be bound by them. And that was adopted by resolution by the city commission. So not that, we don't quite know exactly, but it could be some kind of combination of both of those as we move forward with the Riverwalk.
Yeah, I've, I've been telling people that at this point with the, with the Riverwalk, that everything is, you know, the plans are, are not set in stone, they're set in clay. They're pretty firm and it's going to take a little work to change them, but you can. You know, that it's not, you know, you, you can, you know, put a little blob here and turn it into an eyeball and, you know, whatever, you know. But there is still some malleability to it depending upon what information, what, you know.
And also, that's, and I, thank you, because I love good analogies, I spend my, I think I use a new one every day. Absolutely, and you know, conceptual plans, as you move into detailed plans and construction plans, things, you know, onsite conditions, because you actually are, if we paid the, the design team to do construction plans for the whole site, we'd need more money. I mean, the whole idea is that we're doing the conceptual plan to provide leadership direction, vision and then doing the technical investigations for the one, this phase we're going to build. So phase one construction starts after land use. And I like to, and people have asked how, where is phase one and I tell you, we're still working on it. We'll, we'll identify it at the event on June 3rd, which we'll talk about. But what I, one of the things we're looking at, it's a balance of site preparation, interim access and proof of concept. So of the money we have, I kind of can think of it as balance, if you have too much site preparation and not, and some interim access and a little bit of proof of concept, you probably, you know, you probably wouldn't deliver to the public. Or if you had one and not the other. So we really see it in order to deliver to the public the money, we need some combination of all three. And so that's what we're trying, the needle we're trying to thread with that money and it's, it's looking at all the bullets you saw on that, that previous couple pages. So what comes out really is definitely very deliberate thought about how best to tee this up. As I said, 2018, construction and prep begins and per the lottery-backed bonds, all $12.5 million of the state's contribution must be spent by April 2020. People have asked about Rediscover the Falls, the Friends Group, and they are raising money. And we will be looking at their ability to raise money and there may be some additional elements that are maybe even approved on the planning commission level, that might be kind of ad serves, that if they didn't quite, you know, make the, make it or if they have to kind of pull back, we can kind of have already approved them and those may be smaller interpretive elements or maybe a specific thing that they're raising money for. So we're still working with them, so there may be an opportunity to kind of pre-approve things they may be looking at doing without having to send them back to a planning commission process outside of this phase one. But right now, we are not counting on their money as part of our kind of phase one approach. They would be kind of the bonus.
Can I ask who chose the June 3rd date?
The June 3rd date?
For Omsi.
For Omsi? You know, that's right in the middle of Rose Festival and that's the day of the Starlight Parade. Everybody's parking on that side of the river to walk downtown for the parade.
The orange line.
It's a mess.
Yeah, I think the key is as we move forward every day this summer. And so I think what we, knowing that it was Rose Festival, we wanted to do an afternoon event and a long enough open house that.
Because I'm an MC that day, so there's no way I can attend it, but that's just me, but I'm thinking of all the cars that park down in that area of town to get across the river.
And that's why we were probably starting at about 1:00 o'clock, so it'll probably be a full afternoon open house.
It's a good recognition that this project is so much more than Oregon City.
I think that's awesome.
It's too bad, Tom, it's too bad they can't tell everybody that if you're coming down for Rose Festival and you want to see what's happening on the Willamette and the Willamette Falls, go over to Omsi and then come downtown or just some way to let the Rose Festival know this is going on.
Yeah, well, and we're definitely letting Omsi know, there have been a great.
One way to avoid the traffic jam of Rose Festival down there for parking and all that? Catch the light rail.
That's what Tom just said, the orange line.
The orange line, which, which takes you, you just, you may have to walk a little bit here and there to get there.
I'm already downtown in a tower with my microphone.
Because Omsi charges for parking now, so.
Actually, we do have some free parking available for this event for visitors. I can't guarantee every single person will park for free, but we've actually got a large amount of parking secured. And I'm really excited, actually, I think Omsi is just a fantastic location, it's kid-friendly, family-friendly. It's close to Oregon City, but it also, again, continues our goal, which is to continue to outreach to the metro region and the rest of the state. And to continue to raise the profile of this project, which is how we are going to move forward for funding for phase two. And so I, I, I'm really excited when it came out. Ideally, we would love to have the project on the site, but it's just not in a place that can be family-friendly.
Can't do it.
And so making sure that we are available to reach out to kind of all groups in the metro region, I think was important.
One thing I just want to kind of jump back to a little bit is the timing, because it may feel like we're starting to move fast, right? We've been taking comments, taking comments and it's been a while. We've had a lot of events along the way, but you're going to start to see something. And you're going to start to at some point process a land use application. So that's one of the reasons why we're here tonight is to sort of talk about that timeline. We, there's a few different components, obviously, because it's very complex. But we talked about the color of money with this $12.5 million for the, the state money. And so, for example, we have to spend money within a certain timeline and if we don't, then we jeopardize losing that money. So that's why you're going to start to see, again, events sort of closer together, coming up to submittal of an application and on a specific timeline. The other thing is we want to make sure that before we start meeting again, potentially we'll have another work session before you actually see a legisla, or an application before you, for a detailed development plan. But we want to talk about what our role is, because it's funny, because we are, we have a member on the partners group who is looking at that long-term vision like a property owner and then we are sort of narrowly focused to look at the criteria and the master plan and the criteria in our code and that's it. So I wanted to answer any questions or be available to understand where, what, how we play into the development of this project on the planning commission. It's not for these big picture guidance, it's to, you know, review the development application. And then also another piece of that, which Christina will talk about a little bit, as well as some additional planning commission members.
Yeah, actually, one more thing before we move on to that. We are looking at potentially a planning commission, city commission joint work session on June 13th, I want to say.
Don't say 3rd.
June 13th, I believe, is that the Tuesday city commission work session?
On or about June 13th, we can just go with that.
And Laura will send out a. It is, yeah, Laura will send out more information. But I think our goal is after we have the event, we want to sit down with both the city commission and the planning commission and kind of walk through the plan, answer questions and then, as I indicated, we'll also be having a transportation planning and access updates with Rick Williams consulting, who will be available. So really from 5:00 to 7:00 on that Tuesday, we hope that you all can make a joint city commission, planning commission joint work session. And then I think we can continue to spell out.
Does it have to be on that day?
That is the city commission work session, so we will be having it with the city commission. I think we hope if we can invite the planning commission to attend would be.
Don't you all work up till 5:00?
No, I have a class that day that starts at 6:00 PM.
I've got something on June 3rd.
Well, it's unfortunate. I think what we can work with Laura, if there's, we can do an additional update afterwards in July or August as well.
Yeah, the goal is to have it soon after the June 3rd event so that we could debrief.
So there are two additional pieces to the Willamette Falls Legacy Project. One is the parking access and transportation plan, which is actually a requirement of CP 1402, which we called a transportation abandoned management plan, which is a really wonky term. So I like to rebrand it to the public, so it's a parking transportation access plan, which makes a lot more sense to the general public. And Rick Williams consulting, who worked on both the 2009 parking study downtown as well as an update last summer, is running those meetings and providing the outreach, providing the parking transportation access plan. What we'd like to do for this is we could just come in and provide kind of a, I just kind of check the box submittal for the land use application, these are the things we're going to do. And it might fulfill our regulatory needs, but with this project, it's, it's really a chance to think strategically long-term. So what we're really looking at is talking to people who are passionate about multimodal access, people who live near the site, people who work or own properties near the site, people who are invested in these access questions and issues, to come together to three parking summit meetings and transportation and planning access summit meetings. And I know Laura sent you an email, but there's, the meetings are in April, May and July. And while this isn't a traditional advisory group, we are asking all of our advisory boards, like Transportation Advisory Committee, the Planning Commission, CIC, neighborhood associations, to commit to have a person go to all three of them and so they can be able to answer questions that the group may have and vary information back and forth with the group. And so I know Laura will be asking this group if there's somebody who could commit to go to all three of those meetings and she can send the web link to the project dates for you to see. Is there anything else you want to add?
She already did send us an email.
Yeah.
I sent an email, so you guys are all welcome to go, although we would try not to have a quorum to talk about.
Meetings, weren't they? I was trying to remember what it said.
They're 6:00 to 8:00.
Oh, 6:00 in the evening, okay.
They're generally on Wednesdays.
What were the dates again?
April 26th, May 24th and July.
What did miss?
26th.
So all are welcome, we're just looking for someone to be sort of a liaison or responsible to go to all of them so you don't catch one here and catch one there.
You said, you said, you said April 26th, right?
April 26th, May.
Yeah, I have it on my calendar. April 26th and I think you said May 24th.
And July 26th.
Did you guys want to pick a couple of official people and everybody else is needed? Or how would the commission like to proceed with this?
Let's do rock, paper, scissors.
I'll miss one, so I'm out.
Okay, so you have April 24th, which I put on my cal, I have on my calendar. And say the second one again?
May 24th.
May 24th, okay.
And then we skip a month.
I got it on there and then July you said.
26th.
July 26th, yeah, I have all of them on my calendar. My class is not on Wednesdays. So who else would like to go, since I can go to all three of them?
I cannot go to any of them.
Yes, okay. You're already doing our mobility thing, that's.
Right, well, but I work Wednesday night, so I can't go.
You said you're going to miss one? Paul, is that work time for you?
Well, it, what time is it at? 6?
6 to 8.
6 to 8.
Yeah, that might be cutting it tight for you.
Might be cutting it tight, but I can, I can, you know, I can cut a day short too, I can go in early and.
Once again, everyone's invited to attend, we just want to ensure that our stakeholders who are most engaged can kind of provide that continuity.
Who's this meeting with? I mean, who, I forgot to, what, send the emails, with the other governments or is it just?
It's with our consultant, Rick Williams consulting, who is going to be the one putting together the strategy plan.
He's the one who did the downtown parking study.
Well, it looks like Paul and I will go, but everybody can go.
Okay, I have to go to the last one.
But you don't want a quorum, right?
Yeah, we want.
Do you want to go?
I'll go to, I can commit to one, but I don't know that.
Okay, well, come to the one you can come to.
Want to make sure that if we ever have a quorum about anything that we notice.
As long as there aren't five of us there, we will be fine.
Four, yeah.
Well, we can have, we can have five people there as long as we don't talk about stuff.
Like transportation and parking.
Right.
I'll make sure to separate you in different corners.
We have to eat our lunches by ourselves.
We have seven and it's, it's half plus one.
Yeah. That's algebraic, that's too confusing.
It's too confusing.
Should be four.
More than half is, is what constitutes a.
Like 26th, yeah.
All right, so more, more info to come. Well, we can just play it by ear when we get close to those.
We're, we're going.
All right.
Yep.
Wonderful.
And then I will send the second item back to Laura.
Oh, okay. The other thing we want to talk about is in the framework plan for the legacy project, there was a requirement for some design professionals to be added to the review process. And we talked about this a few months back.
When Charles was still here.
Six months back, maybe, yeah.
Yeah, Charles was still here.
What do we, how do we want this to look? And so we came up with what we think is a good process, where we would get three people to provide, design professionals, they could be from Oregon City, they cannot be from Oregon City, but they would look at the detailed development plan that you would be reviewing for the Riverwalk and any future applications in a different capacity than we're used to. So they would probably sit up here, they would maybe provide something in writing or verbally as well, but they would not vote on the item. So the planning commission is the planning commission and we're not making them planning commissioners, but they are somewhere around staff.
Advisors.
So they're advisors.
And they can be involved in deliberations, absolutely.
They can be involved in, so what we want is for them to be involved the whole time, not just to provide a memo and then never be heard of again. We want them to listen to the testimony as it unfolds so that you can continually advise.
That was kind of our entail when we were talking about it.
Yeah, but they won't vote, because that would require us to change a lot of requirements for the planning commission in the municipal code. So we would stick with planning commission voting. They would just be here to answer questions and provide that professional design perspective. They would have five-year terms, so we'd get three people. So you'll see multiple professionals for different perspectives and points of view.
This is for private and public development, so any, anything that comes in the next five years that is subject to this master plan.
Isn't five years asking rather long commitment from somebody?
Great project, though.
Oh, I agree. I, no, I don't disagree with that.
Well, I think the key there may only be two land, land use applic- I mean, like, we just, in the next five years, there's not, you're not going to be going to that many meetings in the next five years. I think having that continuity of, you know, whenever the, you know, it'll be the Riverwalk, may, you know, hopefully a private application, and hopefully Riverwalk Phase Two, I don't know, you know, we'll find out.
So five years, and then maybe, did I hear you say another five years?
So we would do five-year terms for this advisory role.
Who would appoint them?
So there would be mayoral appointment. It's sort of like a consultant, but sort of not. It's sort of split the difference.
Are they paid?
Nope, we're hoping not.
Well, to me, it seems like, I'll go, sorry.
Do they have to live in the city?
No.
To me, it seems more like an ad hoc sort of thing. Since they're not going to be permanent, but it's temporary.
What if it's a five-year term, it's not really ad hoc either.
Well, we're term, I'm using the word term loosely, loosely.
Yeah, it's.
The reason why I asked five and another five was, how long do you perceive this process going on? I know when we put in a motion, I said, I hope I see this in my lifetime.
You're still young.
There could be, there could be many phases, because right now, every detailed development plan that is beyond a minor site plan will go to the planning commission. And so pretty much all need development unless the, you know, Riverwalk or the private site provides sufficient specificity that the planning commission will want to, or feels comfortable sending it to a Type II review, which could happen as well at a later date in the process.
I think I saw on the Riverwalk, twenty-twenty was a start date of Phase One?
No, they had to spend the money.
Twenty-eighteen.
Twenty-eighteen, and twenty-twenty was a.
Complete date of when we had two. So hopefully, we're opening it up in twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one.
Any estimate, again, I was wondering if it's going to, I'm going to see the, the site in my lifetime. Is that any plan of ten years, twenty years, any, any general?
Whenever you have to rely on the market, you are always guessing. We have this money raised for Phase One. We have a friends group that's actively fundraising, and we will be moving forward, looking for money for Phase Two. And hopefully, within this time period, as Phase One gets built, we, I mean, the idea is it's catalytic, is it starts to push private development that today does not pencil into private development that can pencil. And so it really, it is that market approach. So back to the public is, I like to say, this is a long-term implementation of phased open space and private development. And we know, I can give you the dates for Phase One.
I'm, I'm only asking, because again, I get so many tourists asking, what's going on, when's it going to happen? And I'm going, I wish I knew.
Summer two thousand eighteen is about a three-year process to.
They're visitors, and what, aren't visitors tourists?
Sometimes.
Are you going to have any signs for the June third that, I mean, our little posters or anything that we can put in our windows downtown to let people know, hey, go to one of these meetings?
Yeah, we are working on that right now.
So if we get something through Jonathan, we can put them in our windows.
Absolutely.
Or you could get it from Christine. Go directly to the source. Cut out the middleman.
We could.
Both, we're both fine.
So this could take almost a lifetime, the whole thing down there, it seems like. It took a lifetime to get where we are.
And I think Denise can speak to this, but a lot of people think about, the Lovejoy ramps came down in the Pearl in, what, nineteen ninety-eight, ninety-seven? And people thought, how is this ever going to be built? And it did slowly and surely. I mean, it just takes time.
Yeah.
Time and money. Money and time, mostly money.
Mostly time.
So, I guess the, sorry, I use the word so, that's very bad. The question that I would have is that, are we going to be making any sort of recommendation? Or are we going to be able to vet the prospective people? Because obviously, let me just say, Charles, I'm nominating you right now, which I already did, I already sent that to Laura. I said, Charles Kidwell gets nominated automatically. Hopefully, he'll do it. I think we have to have at least some people that are grounded in the community. And I think, as I've already told Laura, I feel very strongly about these folks having some preservation aesthetic. Because I know that some people, it's not the most important thing, but history is what we have to sell here in Oregon City. We don't actually have to sell it, but we do need to sell it. And that's, that's the thing that we have that nobody else has in this entire state and nation. We've got the history of this place. Makes us very unique and very different. And if they don't know anything about historic preservation or have some modicum of understanding what it is, they're, they're not going to be helpful to us.
So you're saying that in combined with their, because I heard there's six, three design people.
Yes, there's many design professionals that have some, that have some background in, in that, or know about it, or have done a project, have some understanding. To have zero, I think, would not be beneficial to us as a community.
I, it would be great if we could just see the description that gets circulated.
Do they have to live in Oregon City?
No, he's, Zach already asked that.
Oh, that's right, okay.
That's okay.
Yeah, we're hoping, we just get so many that we can raise the bar this high.
He didn't hear.
I can't wait to have that problem.
Yes.
It's a good problem to have.
Yeah, it is. Well, that is all I have for the update.
Mr. Veluski, yes, the Veluski Pavilion.
So, June third is the next big public thing.
Yeah, June third is the culminating event. It's an open house from, and I don't, we haven't finalized the time, but I think it's one to five.
Will you film it so some of those of us who can't make it can watch it like we do these?
Well, I think we'll be filming, filming Michelle, because I think we're, Michelle Dulc, the principal of Snoheta, is going to be presenting at least two times. We are actually going to be in the auditorium, if you know OMSI, as well as the back patio that kind of faces the submarine, and you can kind of walk through the lobby to get to both places. And there's going to be kind of events in both places, and opportunity to get beverages and food at the restaurant that's attached to it, as well as light refreshments are on our, on our end. So, uh, the, uh, it's, it's going to be a, I think it's going to be really interesting and unique and exciting. And it's a, we've asked, already put a request in to see if the governor will be able to attend. We don't, we don't know until closer to the event. But we have done outreach to all five tribes, so hopefully we'll have that. Really excited to kind of show this off.
So when, June fourth dawns, will we have a firm Riverwalk design? A, a plan that was, that was clay till June third and has now been put in the kiln? Or is this, okay, we're kind of done with all the public stuff, and now we've got to get down to the nitty-gritty of, of it? And maybe some brilliant thing will come in through what channel to make a change or adjustment?
I see where you're going with your question, so I'm going to give you my best answer. The partners, the four government entities, are going to provide direction for, so they are providing direction for the design before the event. So you'll, you'll see, the design you see will have been, kind of have their leadership and direction on that. Back to it being a conceptual design, it's aspirational and constructible. I think it's the same thing as, as we move forward and get into Phase One, that's a constructed application. If there's pieces of the preferred design, the conceptual design that are not in Phase One, how moldable they are, I'm going to kind of go back to, it's going to be generally adopted, most likely by resolution. It's aspirational and constructible, so it's in clay. It's really, really hard clay.
But in, there won't be a October general public meeting where you can come in and put dots on the paper. That's over and done with. June third's where you find out what happened with all these multiple input things. And from there forward, it's going to take something, it's going to take some significant effort on the part of one of the four stakeholders, one of the four government entities, to, to make a sea change in what's happening. You might change the material from wood to metal, but that's just, that's incidental. But if it's, you know, we're going to move a habitat area from point A to point B, that's going to take some major work.
I think I agree with that.
Okay.
Well, and I'll bet you lunch that you'll run into issues when you get into the actual construction of it.
Yeah, I mean.
And you're going to need to have that flexibility to be able to make small changes.
Sure, and, and, and that's what I would expect. I just, there isn't going to be this constant going back to the public for tweet, public tweet.
No, I think you, you absolutely said, and then I also use a analogy of, this is the ground game of football. You know, we're just, what do we need to do to get us to that next first down? What do we need to do to the next first down?
Kick a field goal instead of a touchdown. I have a question about the.
No pass, we run, always run.
Go dots. Um, there'll be, of the four government agencies, after we had that last one up at Clackamas Community College, did they take into consideration all the feedback that everybody gave? Or did they have their own ideas, other than what all the, all of this general public gave at that meeting?
So I'm going to go back to the slide. It really is all of these inputs.
Did they take this really seriously?
Yes, all, really, this is, they're listening, listening, these are all inputs. And they do technical investigations, and they go back and listen more, and they're always, they're just using all of these inputs into this design. And they all kind of are engaged in every design decision based on all these things that are coming in.
Because I know a lot of it, like I said, at your table was a lot, what would you like to see? And of course, what you'd like to see and what's possible are two different things sometimes.
So this very much is not, this is a new park. We have Plan A, B, and C, and tell me what plan you like better. Like, this whole process, because of the complexities of this site, this really is a different process, which is technical investigations, outreach to the public, design refinement. Technical investigations, outreach to the public, design refinement, repwash and repeat. And so the preferred design you see really is that expression of the last year of that kind of process.
Do you think, Laura, having sat in on those with so many different people, do you think a lot of people are going to be surprised by what they see, that it's not what at all, what they envisioned? I, I was thinking about that, that long corridor you were talking about to everybody, you know, I'm talking about, do you want it covered, do you want to walk through?
Pipe chase.
The, the pipe chase, yeah. Like, are people who gave all these concepts and ideas, are they going to be, wow, we never even thought about that? We never recommended that? Is, is it going to be something like that?
You guys will all be inspired. And I think you'll all see pieces of what you've said throughout the time implemented. It might not be an image, it might not be the exact image in your head, because it's a balance of everything. But I, I think you guys are going to be impressed.
The way you say that, are you all been privy to pretty much what's going to, what we're going to see on June third? Or they will, I won't, but.
Still not done yet, for one.
It's designed by a committee of commissioners.
But we're coming along, as we come along on pieces.
And you get to see some of that.
Yeah, some, not all. I mean, it's, we're.
Because you won't be surprised, right?
Oh, by June third, no.
The other thing that I think is interesting is how the partners make decisions, which is a consensus-based approach. So they all four get on the same page about this design as they move forward, which is really amazing to show that much unity, given all of these different things that we're balancing and all the things in people's heads of what they want to see. So it really does show that we had to, we have to listen to everybody. I mean, we know who, who's ultimately going to use the site, and we had so much public comment input, and it was genuinely used. And it's not, you'll, you'll see it in the design, and I think you'll be impressed with whatever the final design ends up being. But there's no way in which, you know, we're going to have four people in a room decide what it's going to be.
Only reason I was thinking of that is, again, because I know a lot of people gave input of their concepts. But also, I thought, what if the tribal authorities come in and say, that's not at all what we want? That doesn't at all picture what the tribes would like in that. And you've gotten all these other groups, but not our considerations. I was just wondering how, how that worked.
It's all of it.
Okay.
Well, thank you all very much for.
Yeah, thanks for doing that.
Which is a lot of, not a lot of pretty pictures, but a lot of, like, meat, we got to actually digest.
I've had enough pretty pictures for tonight.
Well, just in general, like, our normal Monet Falls Legacy Project PowerPoints are a lot of pretty pictures. But I think this is a lot of the meat that we have to all digest to be able to kind of be ready.
This is what I've been waiting for, really. I mean, actually, because I, I, every status update, I, well, we're taking more public input.
Could you send us this?
And just know that that's not an exhaustive bullet list, because I obviously left off PGE, which is ridiculous, since we talk to them all the time.
Jim Seda, did you have anything you wanted to comment about on this particular presentation?
And I can.
We've had lots of citizen involvement tonight, so we, we wanted to end on a high note.
Hey, is there any way we could ever look inside the power plant?
Ooh, Christina?
She rushes back.
You knew better.
First off, though, has everyone been on a tour of the site?
Yes.
Or do we need to arrange a tour?
The planning commission had a tour when Tony was.
Before they started pulling stuff out.
Yeah.
So Tom, we can work with you. Okay. We can, we can probably find, find an ad hoc tour that can take you on. Uh, the question of the Holly Powerhouse Foundation, was that it? If you can go inside? Because it's under the dam level for water, it's not, we are not allowed to take people down.
Even with a snorkel?
Well, I mean, I'm talking about when the, if the river level lowers a little bit, still, no? Dang. How about pictures?
We can look down.
Pictures?
We can look down in it.
Photographs?
The design team was able to go down once with permission. We have some photos.
Oh, we can maybe see those. I have, I haven't actually emailed you about this, but I've been asked to try to locate, James, do you remember what the name of the fellow was that had the hotel down?
Come up, so we can get a microphone.
He can just nod, if he, if he knows, I can't remember the guy's name, but I have it written down. But anyway, in the picture that John Mix Stanley painted, there is a brown building in the center of that picture.
Sorry, I need a pen.
And the, some research that's already been done has shown that that was the hotel that belonged to, and I want to say his name is John.
Jacob Astor.
No, was his last name Jackson, the African-American gentleman? That, you know who I'm talking, anyway, you know who I'm talking, anyway. Anyway, so it's been, some research has been done, has confirmed that that was his hotel.
Ooh. That'd be great. I know Lori Matthews with the Cultural Landscape Report, which we hope to have available at the June third, is doing her period plan of, I want to say it's eighteen fifty-one is the one, the date she chose. And I know she's working on finding primary resources for all of those buildings. So is there any way you could forward that information on, if you had it from somebody?
Well, it was part of a presentation that was done by the Oregon Black Pioneers when they had their meeting here. Oh, here it is. I knew I'd written it down. His name was John Livingstone.
I've heard that name before.
And he was, the reason that came up at the meeting is because he was one of the few African-Americans that was excluded. It was alleged that a competitor of his made allegations such as, well, you're not really supposed to be here, so your business is better than my business, and so I'm going to make sure that you lose your business and you get excluded from Oregon, that's the story. But we had, you know about, we had exclusion laws here in Oregon.
Yeah. This is great. Lori may already have this, but.
Anyway, the guy's name is Milo Reed, who's been doing some research. And he's on the, I think he's a researcher with the Oregon Black Pioneers, but it was Gwen Carr who had mentioned this at the, anyway, so Milo said, I told him we could. I told him, we could probably locate where the hotel was on a map. The likelihood that we could go there and physically locate it, probably not.
Yeah. We can, we can talk after the meeting.
Yeah, anyway, so I just wanted to bring that up.
Can you just, in two sentences, talk about all of the really great information that we've had? When people provide historic information, what happens?
Yeah, good. So, a lot, a lot of the things that Jim has done, and just really, people who send in things. Um, I first pass it on to Lori Matthews, who is putting together the Cultural Landscape Report, and she's creating a primary and secondary resource index, as well as a site's, uh, spreadsheet of, as well as to the design team. So, all of that is going to both places. And while the Cultural Landscape Report will be a nice kind of book, all the good meat is in the appendices, which we will have, and we can pass on to additional researchers, as well as people who are actually doing the implementation of the interpretation.
Wow. That's crazy.
We're using it.
Yeah.
I still read Jim's nightly.
It's all in there.
Anything else?
Um, no, just communications, if you're ready.
Sure.
All right. First off, I would like to welcome Vern Johnson, our new planning commissioner to the board. Welcome. Vern is on the CIC, the Chair of the Tower Vista Neighborhood Association. In fact, he resurrected the Tower Vista Neighborhood Association, which went dormant there for a while. Um, and we're happy to have him on board. And then, we also have, um, Oregon City Enhancement Day, which is combining Earth Day Celebration with Arbor Day. Um, we will be doing an event Saturday, April twenty-ninth, at Wesleyland Park, from nine to noon. Um, they'll have a light lunch there, so come join us. Um, there's a couple of, there will be some work at the park, but there'll also be some other ones. For example, McLaughlin Neighborhood Association is going to help us do some planting along Seventh Street. So, um, we look forward to having that.
Going to put a new drainage system in Javon Park?
Yeah.
I think we should have the pond myself.
It's kind of flooded, and then we had to drain the reservoir, so that didn't help very much, um, to do some work. Um, another thing is that I'm happy to sell, uh, to happy to announce that, um, we had a Earth Day proclamation associated with that is our status as a street, or as a Tree City USA. And this is our fifth year as a Tree City USA. So, we're very happy and proud of our planning department and our natural resource committee, who kind of helped us create, um, the street, the Tree City USA status and maintain it all these years. So, we look forward to doing that even longer. Um, other than that, I don't have any other updates, uh, except for the fact that we will be canceling our meeting in two weeks, and then we'll see you back here on May eighth.
So, that email you sent? I don't know, I'll just, yeah, forget it. I didn't say anything.
There's a lot of emails. Yeah, we, we are actually going to use the planning commission hearing date in two weeks for an additional historical review board meeting. They're going to have two in a row, two days in a row. But there's nothing on the agenda.
Boulevard had been taken out, so. They weren't, oh, come on.
All right, that's it.
I think I took some pictures of that, and that's what I'm looking for, of that presentation.
Are we adjourned?
Yes.
Yes.
There we are.
All right.